Everyone ready to go? So, one brief announcement. Someone left a set of car keys up at one of the sign-in desks. I think there's three options. One, the town treasurer is taking donations. That's option one. I don't see any takers. Option two, you can run down here and have everyone stare at you. Or option three, you can just see me at some point. It is a BMW gallery of Norwell. So... So... Lots of takers. The clerk tells me we have a quorum. If everyone remembers, we left off last night, ready to start up at Article 8. Because we passed 6. 7 was passed by the Consent Agenda, so we're picking up at Article 8. If we're ready to go. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19. Recommended FY-19, $17,338,149 for employee benefits, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $17,338,149 be raised from the tax levy. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Boylan?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Gene Boylan, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. So, my... I guess my question is regarding the contributory retirement piece of this article. And it is regarding some information which I think would be helpful not only now, but across the years as we compare and see how things evolve in terms of this. I think it would be helpful to have the following information, which I put in an email to the Warrant Committee today. The total amount of the unfunded actuarial liability, the funded ratio, the current funding schedule, and the investment return assumption. All pretty basic things, and all that I think we all as Town Meeting members would find valuable. Thank you.
Would you like that tonight, Mr. Boylan, or to be submitted offline?
It would be great to hear it this evening.
Okay. Apparently, our projector is dark at the moment unintentionally, so they're working on that. So who can answer this question for the... Mr. Boylan? Mr. Asher? Can you answer this one? Yes.
George Asher, Warrant Committee Chair. I will defer any other technical questions to Amy Dexter on this. The questions were, what is the investment return assumption? The returns are reported every two years. As of 1/1/17, it was 7.5 percent, which is listed up above. The unfunded ratio is 81.5 percent, and the unfunded actuarial liability is $26,993. Just as a matter of course, this is not within the control of the town. These are contractual numbers. We are obliged to pay them. It is overseen by the state, this process. Additionally, having a plan that is over 80 percent funded is, in no other term but heroic for a town this size. Most towns are 20 to 30 percent. So the town of Milton is actually in very good shape. The plan to have it 100 percent funded informally is through 2025, six years from now, at which point there will be excess that will be directed elsewhere at the discretion of the town. I hope that answers your question.
Seems it did. Anyone else wish to speak to this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahey, Precinct 9. This may not necessarily be speaking to the article, but it's related to the article, Mr. Moderator, so I wanted to take the opportunity to comment on this. This is an obligation that's been created by an accumulation of employees that have worked for the town over many years. And I call to the attention of the Town Meeting Body, the only way to manage this is to consider the hiring of each and every employee that we hire. It is the creation of a future obligation that we will have. So every time we add to whatever group that exists within the town, we are creating another obligation for the future, for this to grow. And I think it's something that we all need to be conscious of, and certainly the town needs to keep in mind. Because the only way to manage this particular cost that we face is to control the number of people that we hire within the town. So, may not be the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, but just wanted to have an opportunity to state that.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The article is unanimous. Article 9. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19: Unemployment. Total of $100,000, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $100,000 to be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Mullen?
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. As I understand unemployment, this is paying people when they get laid off. I don't think we've laid off anyone in quite a while. I'm trying to understand why we need to appropriate $100,000 now for unemployment compensation. And according to the note here, we paid $77,000, I believe, in unemployment insurance during fiscal year 17. I don't think we were laying anyone off. I don't know if there's anyone that can explain this.
Ms. Conlon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There usually are expenditures from the unemployment benefit budget every year because there are layoffs that occur during the course of the year in various departments. I understand a lot of these, if not all of them, in the current fiscal year with... the past fiscal year, which has the amount shown in the warrant, are all school-related, but it can happen in any department that there could be a layoff and there could be benefits paid. So generally, there has been a positive number that has been paid out in unemployment from year to year.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 9, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion is unanimous. We are on to Article 10, which is printed in your blue sheet. If you didn't get one last night, there are some more copies up here. The Town Administrator informs me that the one change you should look for is on the first page of the new Article 10. Go down to the subheading Consolidated Facilities, and you will see a fourth-row HVAC technician. That is the one change from before. So with that, I will proceed with a summary reading. Recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 13 of the General Bylaws, known as the Personal Administration Bylaw, exactly as set forth in this schedule, and to appropriate the sum of $34,785 to fund wage adjustments effective July 1, 2018. Said sum to be added to the salary accounts of the departments as shown in the following tabulations, Recommended FY-19. Accounting 24... Actually, I'll skip all that. We'll go down to Chapter Wage... Chapter 13, Wage Adjustments, $34,785. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $34,785 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 11. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulations under the heading Recommendation FY-19: For Public Safety. Inspection services, $519,869; for fire, $5,745,256; for Milton Emergency Management Agency, $10,935; police and youth, $7,439,070; total public safety, $13,715,130. And that to meet said appropriation for least law enforcement, the sum of $1,400 be transferred from the dog licenses surcharge account received pursuant to Chapter 187 of the Acts of 1981; the sum of $7,290 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash, and the balance of $13,706,440 be raised from the tax levy. We do have a presentation tonight requested by one of our committees. Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Make your way down. Otherwise, I'll recognize Mr. Walsh, who's our Chair of our Fire Building Committee, and some of his fellow committee members.
I'm Brian Walsh, Precinct 8, and I'm also the Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. So we come before you tonight. We're for a brief update. It'll only be 10 to 15 minutes. And I was hoping to avoid this, but it's unavoidable, my glasses on. I do want you to know that our long-term goal, a longer-term goal, is to come back here before this party in October, hopefully for an approval for a plan to building our new fire stations and funding, so that we can do the design work for that and have an owner's project manager. So that's what we hope to do in October. Do the next slide, please. So our moderator has appointed a very talented and experienced committee to build long-overdue fire stations to serve Milton for generations to come. Four of our team members are also Town Meeting Members. Next slide, please. So Slide 3. Basically, what have we been up to? And a lot of work, and I really mean this, a lot of work on your behalf. As you will see with our next presenter, relative to the first bullet point up here, we have contracted some outside expertise to ensure that we understand the actual response time, based on five years of actual incidents handled by Milton's Fire Department. We have done a complex or a complete analysis of the Fire Space Needs Committee, which is highlighted here in the second bullet, and are actively engaged in the third bullet to that point. And I think it's important here to just point out that the Fire Space Needs Committee, which was appointed by this town body, did a lot of terrific work. They left us a website. We're going to encourage you to keep following that website, and it's really helped us get up to speed with what some of the requirements and options are. Next slide, please. So the first point here is the summary of how and what we have reviewed on the Space Needs Committee. Secondly, in addition, we have been closely looking into national standards, and there's quite a bit of national standards when you're building a modern 21st-century fire station that I... trust me, much of which we don't have in today's stations. Third, you should know that from our very first meeting, we've invited our Fire Chief Jack Grant to work with us, and he has been a regular attendee and participant at our meeting. We have also made sure that we've involved... the Milton's firefighters have attended most of our meetings, and we put together a subcommittee to continue to work with them, so that we keep in step with what their concerns and needs are. Next slide, please. So what have we been up to? We did a deep dive of the feasibility to rebuild on-site in East Milton. You may recall the Space Needs Committee came and said that they had determined that we would not be able to rebuild on-site in East Milton. We thought it was important just to double and triple-check that. So we put together a subcommittee. We worked hard. We took the state and national standards for what is required in a fire station. The subcommittee exhaustively went over that, working with the chief to see if there was things that we would not necessarily need there, so that we could try to fit that on-site. And I have to tell you that on-site, and we cannot build a 21st-century fire station on location where the current East Milton station is. Our next presenter, a member of the committee, will show us slides that kind of graphically makes that point pretty strongly. So we are also exploring, using technology, and this is really key, and I hope it hasn't caused any confusion, but using technology, we explored whether there was a possibility to do a two-station solution, even though it's looking now to be too risky. We haven't made a final determination, but we felt it was absolutely incumbent upon us to look across the entire town to see if we could provide a two-station solution to keep the costs down and bring that forward to the town. Now, we did that not as a replacement. It was always our intention, if we thought we could bring a two-station solution forward, we would bring that forward with a three-station solution also. Whether we do or do not bring a two-station solution, we haven't taken the final action on that, and you'll hear... you'll know that in October. We've also been visiting and touring recently-built stations. There are a number of communities that have recently built new fire stations, brought them up to today's standards. We've looked at both Westwood and Randolph stations, and I would encourage all of you as Town Meeting Members, these are close by. We had the benefit of having the fire chiefs give us a really detailed tour, but even a drive-by and a stop-and-look will open your eyes as to what you really... what we really should have in this town. And lastly, we hired outside help for less than $10,000 of the $40,000 that we were authorized, and this has really been our only expenditure to date. And for more on this, Mr. Moderator, I would ask you if you could recognize Fire Station Building Committee Member and new Town Meeting Member, Dan Clark?
Mr. Clark, you're recognized.
Hello. Dan Clark, Precinct 10. Next slide. So Brian touched on the fact that we took a really deep dive into East Milton Station, and this is basically the two-paragraph conclusion at the end. This is available on the website if everybody wants to go read it and get the details, but it started out with sitting down with Fire Chief Grant and really diving in and getting an understanding of where can we possibly save space in the current design that was done by Castle Booze? Is there anything that can be taken out? They have a subconsultant, Mitchell Associates, who had come up with a program for everything that was needed in the space to come up with the square footage. We looked at the possibility of trying to take out ADA requirements. Seems that some spaces necessarily can't perform the job unless you're not disabled as a firefighter. So we took a hard look at understanding, how can we possibly save space? And even after doing that, taking out possibly the... an elevator, if we can get an exemption to not have an elevator in the space, it just couldn't be done. You took a look at the graphic on the left. You see the existing footprint of the building. This is the smallest footprint that we could kind of come up with, that you see in the blackout line. You start seeing that it just doesn't fit on the site. That's only a seven... around a 7,000-square-foot parcel, and we're looking at needing at least double the size to really fit everything, so you can pull the fire trucks out. There's also safety concerns about backing up the fire truck as they do now. There's no way to fit a pull-through fire truck at this site location. So our committee recently took action and voted that we no longer pursue this site as a feasible option for rebuilding the East Milton Fire Station. Next slide. So Brian mentioned that we really have been diving in and trying to understand what alternatives we have. These are two maps. The one on my right is an option of a three-station, looking at can we pull East Milton and bring it to the west side of 93? And then the other map is that two-station solution that Brian was talking about. And this was a map that was generated by one of our consultant fire stats in EF Geographic to just start to understand how everything lays out and getting an understanding for what we're working with within the town. Next slide. So this is the most critical... this is all draft at this point. We're expecting a final report within the next month, but these three graphics, along with another 50 to 60 graphics that they generated, really tell the story. These images are... the red dots or the green dots are the last five years, every response that the Fire Department has responded to. There's over 18,000 responses. After you go through the data and take out addresses that you can't read or aren't full or missed... calls that were actually false alarms, things like that, you end up with roughly 15,000 calls over the last five years. So what this tells us is, we can model where they are, and then we can do a network analysis and understand, how long does it take to get to each of them? These three maps here show you... a red dot is a call that's not responded to within four minutes. That's the national standard. You want 90 percent of your calls to be responded to within four minutes or less. Currently, the town operates somewhere in the 95 percent range, which is the far-right image that you see on the slide. The middle image in the slide would be pulling Engine 2, which is in East Milton, to the west side. We were playing around with how far west can you go before it no longer makes sense and you're encroaching on Headquarters? How far west can you go before it starts to have an impact on the East Milton and 93 responses? So we came up with a location west. This changes the response calls by .07 percent, or roughly two calls a year. So there's really negligible impact in pulling that station to the west side. Additionally, for that fire district, 77 percent of the calls are already on the westbound, and roughly 75 percent of the land area is on the west side. So it really starts to make a lot of sense. Can we pull that station away from the square and put it in a place that has more space? The final slide here is... I'm sorry, not slide, final image. On the far left is that two-station model. The big indicator that you see here are the red dots. There's a lot more of them. Those are calls that are not responded to in four minutes. The draft analysis suggests that that takes you somewhere around a 91, 90.5 percent response rate within four minutes or less. It takes you to the edge of the national standard. It doubles the calls that aren't responded to within the four minutes. So... and this doesn't take into account any potential future growth in any of these areas that aren't within the four-minute response time. So our committee's really starting to look at this, and we have hesitation that there are just as too much risk possibly. It's not palatable to our committee, as nine people, but we haven't had a final decision on this. It's something that we're going to be working on in the next few weeks to months and while we get the final report. Next slide. So with that, I ask the moderator to recognize Webb Collins.
Mr. Collins, you're recognized.
My name is Webster Collins. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 9, and... oops. What I'm going to address first is other committee work, and particularly the Town of Randolph Fire Station, which has already been mentioned here this evening. I think it's important to... you see the term "hard costs." It's important to know that I have with me the final bill for that station. The date of the bill was August 16, 2017. In other words, it's current. For any of Town Meeting Members or others in the community that wish to take a look at the station, you can go to 252 Main Street in Randolph and see it. The station itself is a four-bay, 6,500-square-foot station, but we're... you're hearing a new term tonight called Headquarters, and it doesn't really fit our needs, because you have to add about 1,000 square feet to it to make it what's called a Headquarters Station. What a Headquarters Station is, is where the chief is, where the dispatching takes place. In other words, it's the cornerstone of the entire fire system that we have in the town. Now, what I'm going to read to you on hard costs for a very comparable station that would apply with modification of probably adding 1,000 square feet. The original contract cost for this station was $4,078,000 even. The final bill with all change orders and a one-year passage in time was $4,089,569.47. In other words, what you heard last night of $34 million of fire station costs is a myth. We're talking about here something that we are going to be able to do. We'll continue next to the next point on looking at other fire stations. We're learning a great deal. We're being educated on that. The... oops, I'm moving around here, and I'm shifting the... I can't see it from behind, so I apologize for that. But in terms of the Westwood Station that we inspected, we learned a great deal. We learned that they made mistakes. They had three contractors. They had huge cost overruns. Their architect had never designed a fire station before in their life. And so this is the type of work that is going on by your committee and what I really wished to talk about. And finally, the bottom line in this particular situation is that I want everyone to know that we're leaving no stone unturned. We're looking at every single little detail. One of the things that we're looking at even is a donation of the new fire station. That is a distinct possibility if we do things right and do things the way they should be done. So basically, the bottom line is... the next person can put up the final slide, the thank-you slide. Good. And what I want to close with is that we are going to, as I mentioned, we're leaving no stone unturned, and we're totally committed to doing this right in the most professional manner that you can possibly believe. I want to mention, because there were pictures up here of the committee, there was a name at the bottom of the committee, Gene Sullivan. What you must know is that that man built the Convention Center at the Heinz Auditorium. We have... within this committee, we have all the talent to be able to bring to the town the very, very best and accomplish it right without any risk to the town, with potentially very minimal cost to the town. And I assure you personally, I give you my guarantee, there will not be a single mistake made if I have anything to do about it.
I see one speaker would like to speak to this article, sir?
That's a tough act to follow. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Sloan from Precinct 10. I wanted to address one item in this article, Article 11, and specifically in the comment section from the Warrant Committee, there's a statement that Inspection Services was able to fill the much-needed code enforcement officer position as a result of our override. And some people might remember that I strongly advocated for that position from this microphone last year, so I was thrilled to see that we finally were able to accomplish that. And I wondered if we could get an update, possibly from the Building Commissioner, if he's here tonight, or if not, maybe from someone else in our Town Administration that could give us a form of a progress report? Was this a good decision? What kind of progress are we making in town addressing a backlog of code enforcement issues? Questions about process? How are complaints, if you will, or issues being tracked and resolved? And how are these... how are these issues being documented?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dennehy, you're recognized.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Mr. Sloan, thank you for your question and your support both last year and again this year with the code enforcement officer. It, it has been a huge success. Building Commissioner Joe Bronde, I can't be here tonight, but anticipation of that, I did ask him for some statistics. This isn't, this is just a general overview, but we have received much support in the office. A department that quite honestly was a very reactive and responsive department has become much more proactive. Just some of the statistics. Birch Amor was hired in September, Milton resident, went to Milton Public School Systems. Those of you that know him, know him to be one of the most quality individuals you'll ever meet, so it was a great hire from that perspective. When Birch was hired, there was about 120 open zoning complaints. Of those, he closed and resolved approximately 80 of those. Since he arrived, we've received an additional 121 zoning complaints of these. Another 70 of those have been closed. There were 22 cases filed in court. Thirteen of those are still pending. And just from, from where I sit, when people are calling you complaining that there is a gentleman issuing violations to them, that, that is, I think substantive proactivity and it's what we were looking for. And I heard it loud and clear here last year in this auditorium. Birch has been doing a great job. He did receive a pile of work when he got here. He's been working his way through that pile while also proactively outwriting violation notices. He's very approachable. He's worked through a lot of these without violations having to go to court. So I think that the general overview is that it's, it's been a great success. As soon as that pile that he inherited shrinks, you'll see even more of Birch out on the street taking care of some of the issues that, that, again, I heard loud and clear in this room to be blight and some problems in our different precincts.
Mr. Sloan, we good?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Is someone coming down? Yes, okay.
Jeannie Burns, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Before we move on, I just wanted to find out where exactly are the locations of the alternative spaces for the, that the Firespace Building Committee is looking at for the two and three options?
Mr. Walsh, do you have that answer? Or one of your committee members? Mr. Clark.
Dan Clark, Precinct Ten. For the two-station option, what we were exploring was a site that actually the Firespace Needs Committee had also identified, which was parcel land that the cemetery has that they currently don't use on the corner of Brooklyn Center. We've had some initial dialogues with the Cemetery Trust. No formal meetings between the two, but some just initial dialogues to find out if that is a option. We don't have a final resolution on that. We've been trying to run these things in tandem as we don't know if it's actually an option given response times. There's also some wetlands issues to work through, so we're trying to run through these options simultaneously while keeping all our options open. As for the three-station option, there's several options that we've still considered, which would be Firespace Needs Committee. It also identified the East Milton Library Branch as an option. And then additionally, we've looked at the Cunningham Foundation Trust, potentially seeing if they would be interested in selling a portion of land. We haven't had any formal dialogue with either, with the Cunningham Trust to point. We've tried to reach out. We haven't had any traction with that at this point, so. And then we went through and, just to provide some additional background, part of the whole analysis and how we ended up hiring the outside consultant is through my work, I have a background in it doing similar type of work. We really tried to understand where are their potential options and we did our own due diligence in understanding what parcels could possibly work and for two and three-station options. And a lot of those runtime analysis gives us options in these areas and that's part of the reason why we're reaching out to those two or three options that we mentioned. Does that answer your question?
Yes, Ms. Conlon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We'd like to speak to that question as well. We're very grateful for all the work that the Fire Building Committee is doing and we have had a meeting recently where the chair came in and updated us. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen will be involved in any discussion about the future location of the East Milton Fire Station. We want to assure everyone, there will be public discussions about that when the time comes and whatever recommendations are made will certainly be discussed in open session with the board and with the committee and with all interested parties. So that shouldn't be taken as a, as a determination that there's no potential option at that site and we just want to clarify that, that the committee will make, may be making that recommendation, but the board has not discussed that.
Thank you, Mr. Beeler.
Thank you. Rich Beeler, Precinct Seven. Oh, I'm short. Thank you. Just a quick, and I appreciate the Fire Needs Committee's work. I know they've spent a lot of time on it and I understand it's definitely the beginning of the process, but I just had a question if perhaps they could give a little bit more information on the runtime analysis. It sounded like, and I'm by no means a statistician, so I, I don't understand what goes into that, but I did, what was mentioned, it sounded like, was they looked at past, past calls or past emergencies and I just want to see how that relates to where the actual houses that aren't calling into those emergencies. I mean, I haven't had a fire at my house in the past 10 years, but it doesn't mean I'm not going to have a medical emergency in the next 10 years. So I just want to see why we would look at just that data or was it overlaid on top of other data? I do recall when Mr. Morash and Chief Grant came around and did their talk, they showed similar data, so I wanted to make sure, is that the same data? Because I do recall that the farther you went away in East Milton from the existing site, it became very difficult or timely to get to certain parts of East Milton. And I do believe, and I don't want to put words in the name of its mouth, but I remember somebody saying that if we get too far away, then perhaps Quincy was going to respond to emergency at the outskirts of Milton. So I just, if they could talk a little bit more about how, what goes into that data, it would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, can you answer that?
Dan Clark, Precinct Ten. So there's actually a lot of information that goes into it. So the way that you do a network analysis is, working with the town engineer, we pulled the GIS data that they have available, which includes the streets, signals, stop signs, all the parcels, and you use that as a starting point. We then overlaid into, the consultant that we hired then incorporated Mass DOT traffic information. Town engineer had a, we used traffic data from the last five years that was available pretty much anytime they are asked to do a traffic study from the Traffic Commission. They have that data, so we have speed data, traffic data. We overlaid that into the system and then we supplemented with Google Maps traffic data. It's publicly available information. Whenever you're using Google Maps, you're authorizing them to track your speed and it gets compiled into public available traffic information. So those sorts of things go into it. Additionally, when you're operating a fire truck, you put in restrictions into the system. They're very heavy, difficult vehicles to drive, so you put in turn delays for left turns, turn delays that are longer for right, or left turn versus right turn. We included the topographic information of the town, going up large hills, going down hills, putting all that information into it. So that's kind of the information that builds your network. From there, typically what you would do is you would take the five years of data that we have that was provided by the chief. Most towns aren't working on systems that are, they actually have timing mechanisms, so most towns are dispatched through what's called a CAD system. Those towns are able to tell you how long it takes from the time the call gets in to the fire truck leaves and then what the response, the runtime is, and then that gets aggregated together as a response time. So a response time is from the call to when they get there. A runtime is just from when the truck leaves to when it gets there. So that's what we're focusing on and that, that's mostly because we don't have that data. Most fire stations can tell you what that information is. The way it works here is when a call comes in, it goes to police, then gets dispatched over to fire. They then dispatch it out of headquarters, so they don't have the ability to write down what time all these things came in at. So what they have is just the date, the address, and what the response type was. So we use that data as a starting point to put all that information out there. So to speak to one of your points, though, those maps are just one portion of the type of analysis that was done. In addition to having all those data points, we also have maps that show you what the response times are and I don't have them included in the presentation, but they'll be on the website soon when we get the final report. But what that shows you is where you can get to within town, within one minute, two minutes, three minutes, four minutes, all the way out to eight minutes, because there's a second component to this, which is second engine due is a critical point. That has to be, if an engine has left East Milton and you need a second engine in that area, they're supposed to be able to get there within eight minutes from wherever that's coming from. So that's another part of the mapping system is one through eight-minute increments. So there's a lot of information. I didn't want to bore everybody with it, but, so that's, that information's in there. We additionally backchecked that information with what the computer was modeling. Our committee did a lot of runtimes initially to find out if this was feasible, driving with the fire chief, myself, doing timing runs. We used the data from the Firespace Needs Committee, compared them and found a really strong correlation. So that's pretty much all the information that goes into those. Those three maps are three of about 30 or 40 maps for all that information. So we do look at it both sides. What are the response times to where they've been? We use that for historical comparative analysis and then we also look at it regardless of where the calls have been. Where are the calls? So we know where the locations are that wouldn't be four minutes. Does that answer all your questions?
Thank you. Mr. Morash.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, Precinct Two. I was driving home one night through Central Square and I saw a sign that almost made me crash my car. It said demolition to start April 9th. Expect delays. I rise because I have a concern, Mr. Moderator. I know the article that was voted on at the last town meeting. I've read it a couple of times in the last day, read it over again, and it said that this committee was formed to build or renovate or build or construct three fire stations. Didn't say build two anymore. We had been through that. So I'd like to know if the will of town meeting was to build three fire stations, why we're still looking at two stations when the previous committee had researched that for a long time? With firefighting professionals? With people that had experience in living in, fighting fires, responding to fires, building, looking at fire data for probably 40 years? And now we're back to square one. I would ask you all to go back and look at what we all voted on last October and take a hard look at that. Whether it does any changes to what these folks do, and God love them, I know the job they're going to do, but a bigger issue is if town, to me is if town meeting votes an article, should a committee have the ability to go and change their work based upon what they think they should be doing? I don't think that's what the purpose of legislation is and what we do here in town I'm happy to hear that they agree, this committee agrees that you can't fit that fire station at the current site of East Milton. Man, we knew that two years ago. Things have changed dramatically in the fire service that I've said to you on a couple of occasions. This is another year delay in getting decent, safe housing and headquarters for these firefighters. Every time you delay that, every time you put those firefighters back in East Milton, you are going to run the risk of cancer-causing stuff to those firemen who are living in a horrible place to work. We've asked you to go look at this. This committee's going to ask you to do the same thing. I just heard Mr. Collins say you should go and look at these fire stations. How many of you took that up? One hand. Please visit your existing fire stations. I urge you all to go to these new fire stations. See what Randolph's doing. See what every town around us is doing and say, why are we putting these firemen through this? It just doesn't make sense. But we can, as that sign said, expect delays. This will cost money. We have not spent money on our fire department for over 50 years. Go back and look at that record. It's now time to build these fire stations for these firefighters and for your families. The debate of where you place them is something that this committee will go through. That's what we said a year ago. You can look hard and fast at that. You can move it around, but you can't get away from the four minutes and you can't get away from the eight minutes. I hope none of you have to have a fire and have these guys respond to you, but I will guaran, and you can do things to make that happen, but I will guarantee you, you will need a firefighter and a police officer and an ambulance to take you somewhere in this town in the next 10 years. So with that in mind, I wish this committee well. I'm glad for the work you've done. Brian, you've always been pushing this unbelievably well. I wish you luck in what you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Morash. Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none? All in favor of Article 11? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? The motion's unanimous. Article 12, General Government, recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY19. Accounting: $332,226. Insurance General: $1,9,903. Law: $371,000. Information Technology: $544,199. Town Reports: $34,150. Selectmen: $714,532. Veterans Benefits: $143,302. Total Board of Selectmen: $3,149,312. Board of Assessors: $295,872. Town Clerk: $333,612. Election and Registration: $115,130. Treasurer/Collector: $393,149. Total General Government: $4287,075. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $4268,181 be raised from the tax levy and the sum of $18,894 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing, yes, sir. Mr. Mullen.
Peter Mullen, Precinct Two. Perhaps I'm following up on what Mr. Morash had to say, but I also noticed the sign that said, "Expect delays." I'm not sure that this is the right article, but the selectmen have been the, the lead point with regard to the Henry's Building, so I'd ask if we can get a report as to what's happening with regard to Henry's and when we can expect some action down there. I also have a memory that there was about $390,000 worth of money that we've been carrying along. At one time, it was in the reserve fund to pay for certain costs that the town is going to incur in connection with that demolition, and I don't know where that money is now in our budget.
Fair question, Mr. Mullen, Ms. Conlon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We thought there might be a question about Henry's at this town meeting. There have been some delays at the, with the demolition. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has asked for more documentation from the developer and their demolition consultant. We don't know that the timeline that we had published, which was that the diversion of the MBTA would start on Memorial Day weekend and continue for a period of several days. We don't know whether that's been, is going to change. We're going, we'll keep everyone updated if there is, but as of right now, we, we don't have any information that that has been compromised or has been changed. So that, we recognize that there have been some delays. The town has transferred its portion of the property to the developer. The town has entered into an agreement with the MBTA to, because the town has taken over the obligation to pay for the MBTA diversion for the period that the trolley services shut down, which we assume will be for up to a week, starting Memorial Day weekend. shut down, which we assume will be for up to a week, starting Memorial Day weekend. In terms of the funds that Mr. Mullen asked about, we had about little less than four hundred thousand dollars that was in the reserve fund, approximately three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. It's in the current year's budget. It is not proposed to be rolled over into the reserve fund for FY-19, which is what we have been doing the last few years. We did go to, the board went to, and the town administrator went to the warrant committee maybe a month or two ago, and asked the warrant committee to transfer those funds to an account that we've opened with the MBTA. We asked for the full amount. The warrant committee agreed to transfer two hundred thousand dollars to us, which we have since deposited with the MBTA, and there is an agreement that's in place between the town and the MBTA, and we will most likely be going back to the warrant committee seeking the balance of the one ninety-seven, because as we get close to year end, we want to encumber those funds so that they're available to us for the work to be done this year, and in case, there should be any kind of a delay beyond June 30th, which we're not anticipating at the moment, but to address any potential developments, we're going to be looking to make sure that that money is, does not just flow into free cash next year, but is available to us to make use for this particular purpose. So we recognize that there have been some delays. We will keep everyone up to date if we have any developments, and if we're back here Thursday night, we'll, if there's been any development in the last couple of days at that point, we will update you, but that's the current status. We are, I should add, we are working with the developer, and we're doing everything we can. The town has, the town administrator, the building inspector have been very involved in the process and communicating with the DEP and with the developer and their contractor, and we've been doing everything that we can to try to move this along, and the developer is also working very hard to get any paperwork that is still open with DEP to be submitted.
Seeing no further speakers or questions, all in favor of Article 12? Please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? I heard unanimous. Article 13, Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulations under the heading Recommended FY-19. Conservation Commission: Twenty-five hundred. Council on Aging: Three hundred and four thousand, nine fifty-three. Historical Commission: Two thousand, two hundred and forty. Personnel Board: Fifty-six thousand, five sixty-eight. Planning Board: Ninety-nine thousand, nine thirty-two. Warrant Committee: Ten thousand, two fifty. Total Boards and Committees: Four hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-three. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars be raised from the tax levy. I'd like to recognize Ms. Taguayus, who has a brief comment on the planning board, since they are funded by this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cheryl Taguayus, Precinct Nine Town Meeting Member, Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and as of recently, Chair of the Planning Board. Would you please join me and the rest of the planning board in welcoming our newest member, Rich Beeler? Okay, while we see if we can locate the presentation, I'll get started. At least I have my printout. So as I said, I'm the Chair of the Committee. I'm the Planning Board's representative, which makes me the Chair. I'm joined by Katie Conlon, the Board of Selectmen's representative, and then we're joined by Taber Keely, Dick Burke, and Liz Miller. So the Planning Department also provides excellent technical support to us, so our Planning Director, Bill Clark, and our Assistant Town Planner, Lauren Masier. So town meeting may recall that the, that the town worked on developing the master plan for a two-year period. It had not been updated since nineteen seventies, and we adopted that updated master plan in two thousand and fifteen. Okay? I'll keep going. The Master Plan Implementation Committee was formed as a result of an article here at Town Meeting, and we've been working diligently since that time, meeting once a month, and looking to make sure that other departments and boards and committees in the town understand their role in its implementation, and we are happy to report that there's been good progress on many departments and committees in that work.
I forward it on. We'll see if she can pick it up.
Okay, so I'll just, until we get it up. There are seven overarching goals in the master plan. Some of them are, sound a little bit vague, and some of them sound a little bit specific. The first is to preserve Milton's character. The second is to promote a healthy Milton. The third is to preserve housing and neighborhoods and provide a range of housing types. The fourth is to promote economic development in vibrant mixed-use centers. The fifth is to improve transportation and circulation. I think everybody would like to see transportation and circulation improved. It's only gotten worse since that plan was developed. Six is to provide high-quality services and infrastructure, and seven is to strengthen Milton's capacity to plan. All right. So I'll highlight a few of the things that I was hoping we could all just look at, but I'll, I'll point them out. The Shade Tree Committee was formed and has been quite active, has been working with the Planning Board and the Public Works Department. The Historic Commission has been very active in inventorying our historic resources, and in fact, this year is recommending a Historic District Study Committee. They've come to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and I believe they have, or they will be coming to the Board of Selectmen. Traffic calming measures have been put in place, particularly near our schools, in conjunction with the Safe Routes to School Program. The DPW has been finalizing our Complete Streets Program, which should help the same with traffic calming and our safe routes. We have playground improvements, thankful to our playground planners, with support from the town and its annual budget. And the Planning Board worked last year, and Town Meeting adopted a Great Estates Bylaw, which preserves historic landscape on Canton Avenue while allowing new development on the Carberry property. The signage bylaw was updated. The Traffic Commission added a Bicycle Advisory Committee member. We've heard about the Fire Space Needs Committee, the Public Works Committee, I mean, the Public Works Facilities Plan that we heard about in the fall. There've been great strides in preventative maintenance investment, as we talked about with the Capital Improvement Committee. There's been town management improvements. Our expanded Board of Selectmen is one. There's been work on the Pilot Committee, which is to look at payment in lieu of taxes with nonprofit property owners. We funded our Assistant Town Planner. We've made great strides in our green community, most recently with our LED streetlights and our Solarized Milton Program. Now I really need the visuals. No? Can't get them. Okay. Well, that's too bad. Everybody can envision, I guess, Milton's waterfront. As small as it is, it's a beautiful attraction. It's the part, it's part of Milton Village, one of our small business districts. And last year, I talked about embarking on a study with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission in this area to look at how we can improve public access, expand opportunities on our waterfront, and also to tackle that goal of making our mixed, our business districts mixed-use and vibrant. So on the Milton Village zoning, actually, both of these, there's a, so there'll be a study. Okay, keep going till you get a nice. You're saving me. Keep going. There we go. Okay, so the red line is the demarcation of the business district. So some people may not realize that High Street is part of the business district. It's uphill from Adams Street, and it also encompasses eighty-eight Wharf and the bike trail and the MBTA trolley and the waterfront. So one of the things that we've been looking at is how to get synergy here, so if we already have some mixed use here, because we have residential at eighty-eight Wharf, and we also have some residential on High Street, but our zoning doesn't allow residential in a multifamily unless it's been done on a large-scale plan unit development. So we wanted to see if there was some opportunity to expand that opportunity to other properties in this district. So looking down Adams Streets toward Lower Mills, we see a lot of historic character. Next. And we want to preserve that character while allowing for multifamily residential above-first-floor commercial. So our commercial districts are quiet in the evening. We don't have residents there. We don't have on-street parking there, I mean, overnight parking in the, in the business districts. So what this would do, it would allow this to be on sites that are at least thirty-five-hundred square feet, so the small sites there on High Street may not, this may not apply to them. As an overlay, it doesn't change the underlying zoning, but is an alternative to the underlying zoning. So the underlying zoning in the business district is purely business use, but it does allow for three stories in height or forty-five feet in height, and we're not looking to change that. What we're looking to do also, right now, there's no design standards, so someone could come with a commercial building, that's what we call as of right, and go directly to the building department and not have the design reviewed. So under this overlay, there would be design standards that would be, would be very specific to the character of this district. And then we wanted to give some incentive for preserving historic properties, for improving the public realm, and for addressing affordable housing. So the incentives only apply to the properties on Adams Street, not on High Street, because there was concern that we, we heard in the community about scale on High Street. These incentives are, would only be granted at the discretion of the Planning Board, and they would allow an additional story. So in return for that additional story, it would, we would have to have historic preservation, public realm improvements, Milton Landing improvements, or affordable housing. And part of the way we can look at capitalizing on some reinvestment opportunity is to look at the number of parking spaces required, given our proximity to public transit in the bike trail. So a lot of questions have come up about what might new development do here for traffic? So there's a traffic study underway. So what would happen with this zoning that's been drafted by our consultant at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is it would go to the Planning Board. The Planning Board would then take a look and do a lot more work on it, would hold public hearings on it, and then if, when it felt it was ready, would submit it to the Board of Selectmen for consideration of this town meeting to look at, potentially in the fall, if not the fall, next spring. Okay, the waterfront. The waterfront looks beautiful. And it is beautiful at different times of the day, and we want to make sure that people realize it's there and they have good access to it, people of all ages and all abilities, but not just to get onto the water, but to enjoy the serenity of the property. This was one of the things that was highlighted in the master plan a number of times, and a lot of people made comments about it. There's a historic building on the property, which was what's called the former lockup police station originally, the original police station, which we want to make sure is preserved and put to continued public use. But we want to be able to add some amenities to allow a different kind of user on the waterfront to have more convenient access, and I'll get into that in just a moment. Also, some additional amenities, signage and wayfinding, this is historic area, we can add some signage that helps people understand the history of this area, more seating and more amenities, and even potential for things such as car share and bike share facilities. Next. I'm sorry, I want to do this one. Go ahead, next one. So one of the things that we've been looking at is whether there's space to add a dock that would be at a lower level than the dock that exists now, which would be more suitable for crew and kayak and canoe. By putting a new dock and also looking at the land side to see where those crew boats could be stored, that's more convenient to the water, we could open up some additional space for the farmer's market, which is in the park. And then there's a town-owned property, or a town-owned piece of property at the very end. It's called Captain's Landing. It was donated to the town for a public beach. Right now, it's kind of a mud flat, and we're looking at whether there's some opportunity to use that, and a lot of people have suggested, why don't we look at whether we can connect to Hutchinson's Field? So that's something that would be a long-term kind of effort, because there would be a lot of complications and permitting issues with that, but it is something that a lot of people have suggested. So in order to advance the ideas here, we need to understand what our conditions are in our waterfront. There's a lot of sediment, and it means that it's pretty shallow to get out on the water much of the time. So we're having a hydro survey done of the river bottom, and we're identifying what the permitting issues might be. This has a lot of regulatory requirements, which I won't go into fully here, but this work that we've been doing on this area has been at least a year and a half in duration. We're getting the, our consultant is concluding his report, and then we will be, our committee will be turning it over to the Board of Selectmen and to the Parks Department for further analysis and implementation. Okay, next. Okay, so the year forward, the Master Plan Implementation Committee looks forward to working with the Planning Board and with the community in East Milton Square. There's been a lot of interest in mixed-use overlay in that part of town, which is also one of our business districts. There's also a lot of interest in traffic analysis, and not just for vehicles, but also for public transit, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and that ties into our Complete Streets Program. And then also housing, what our housing options are, affordable housing, the range of housing, the type of housing that's available to us, and we'll continue to make outreach to other parties who are responsible for implementing the master plan. So we're seeking funding equal to the funding that we've had for this year, which is being used for the consultant services that I mentioned. Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak to Article 13? See, yes, ma'am?
Lori Stillman, Precinct Two. I believe that the Chairman of the Warrant Committee yesterday declared that Milton was a highly civic-minded community, and I want to add my support to that comment. From everything that I've seen over the last thirty years that I've lived here, we have many members of the community who've been involved in some kind of civic improvement in the town, and volunteering and donating money, et cetera. The reason why I stand here today is because I wanted to note that there is really a shortage of space for community-minded organizations to meet in town now, particularly in the center area of the town where you want it to be convenient for folks. And so when you have groups, and I'm the Director of the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition-- And so when you have groups, and I'm the director of the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition, we now have five hundred people, members of our coalition, and if we want to hold a meeting where people can have conversations with one another, it's very difficult to find a place. The library is often completely booked. Town Hall is mostly for government business. And, you know, it's a struggle to find places, and we don't want to put barriers in the way of our residents from meeting and wanting to do voluntary town improvement. So the reason why I'm speaking to Article thirteen is, you know, it so happens that the council on aging is listed here, and I'm, what I would like to put forward is to ask that the selectmen think a little more carefully over the coming year strategically how we might expand of space for civic organizations within the town to be able to meet. And one thought that I had was that I know that the council on aging, their space isn't utilized as much as it might be. However, it's costly for them to be able to staff and maintain that space. So what I would like us to consider perhaps for next year, whether it's free cash or some other way, currently in the revolving fund, they have about a thousand dollars in charging community organizations to use that space. Places, you know, small organizations like the Substance Abuse Coalition doesn't have the funding to pay for that space. But if we could put another thousand dollars or so into the council on aging and then be able to make that space available for civic groups, it could be extremely helpful. That might not be the best alternative, but I just ask that it be, that creative solutions be considered for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Sloan, Precinct Ten. I have a question for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and I think the amount of work that that committee has done, done in Milton Village is tremendous. My question is, after seeing the indication of the two, the traffic study and the hydro survey that's underway, things that we have approved funding for last year and funding that's being requested going forward, my question is, what will be the benchmark going forward town-wide that would determine when the town would respond to residents' requests in advance of development for these kinds of impact studies? So for instance, East Milton Square, there are a tremendous number of questions that are being asked in East Milton Square. And there are people in East Milton who are probably asking the town for more than the town can give them at the moment. There were many questions asked related to traffic study, for instance, and historic study of Blue Hills Parkway when that proposal was before town meeting last year. And I think about how many, how many folks up on Upper Canton Avenue were so interested in traffic impacts and such before development. And I see this good work that's being done in this case before an overlay is proposed, before development is proposed. And my question is, what's the benchmark that we as residents can expect when our project isn't of the scale of Milton Village, for instance, but the impacts could be just as
So, that's really kind of a question about when we're looking at zoning for a particular property and a particular proponent, we know what the project is, versus looking at a district. So when we look at the district, it's, we make it part of our planning analysis. When we're looking at a particular developer, we're writing that into the zoning so that the study has to be done by the developer. Our preference is to do it in the planning way, and in terms of the planning board, we're going to be discussing what some of our zoning and planning initiatives for the next year might be at one of our upcoming meetings. But certainly the work that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is doing, we see traffic as something that is raised everywhere and anywhere in town, so that it's hard for people to think about how we might accommodate new growth without understanding the traffic implications of that. So it's something, Joe, wherever you went, the traffic piece of that, I think, is going to be something definitely proactive from our point of view.
Seeing no other speakers or questions, I'm sorry, Ms. Conlon, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We just wanted to respond to Ms. Stillman's question. We can definitely commit that we are looking at issues such as the one that you've raised. As you know, we're getting reorganized as a new board with new members. We've had some initial discussions about new committees we may want to form. One of them we've talked about is a Space Needs Committee. We've also talked about, one of our new members has suggested the possibility of a quarterly meeting, neighborhood outreach meeting with different neighborhoods to talk about things that are happening in those areas. So we're thinking along those lines. We understand the situation that you're referencing, Ms. Stillman, regarding the council on aging, and we're definitely committed to taking that up as a conversation in the near future.
Mr. Kelly?
Brian Kelly, Precinct Seven. I have a question on the cost of like that sediment study in the river, and why are we paying for that? I was down to take in pictures after that last flooding incident, and most of that area is completely underwater. Now, if it's because we want to develop something and we have a proposal from a developer, wouldn't we ask them to pay for that study? So why are we paying all this money upfront now for a maybe down the road? I have a feeling, I'm no genius, but there was an awful lot of water in that area, and we might come to the conclusion that we can't do much more than what we're already doing on that waterfront, and we spent all that money. So, I mean, why don't we talk to the yacht club and see what they know about the river? They probably know more about that river than, try asking them. I don't know, I just think that that money might be a waste. So of that fifty grand, how much are we spending on that study? And maybe we can reduce the amount of the fifty grand by the amount of that sediment study in the river, which I think might be a waste of time right now.
Mr. Gias?
There's a lot of interest in having a second dock at our waterfront. And in order to answer that question, we don't know whether there's capacity, and we don't know where the best location would be. The cost is approximately seventy-six hundred dollars. It's already in process, yes. The planning board and the Board of Selectmen have to approve any expenditure that goes through the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and both boards approve that expenditure.
Okay, seeing no further speakers. All in favor of Article thirteen, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The article passes. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been informed, we've got a couple guests from the Blue Hills Regional Technical School who are here tonight. They have to visit a number of town meetings. I might entertain a motion to advance Article twenty-seven to this, any discussion? All in favor of advancing Article twenty-seven to this point in the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. I will then read Article twenty-seven, which is on page forty-four of your warrants. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended FY-19," a total of nine-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of nine-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Folks, by the way, feel free to work your way down while I'm speaking or while another speaker is speaking, and we'll keep moving along. Yes, please.
Christine Hadland, Precinct Two. I'm the one that started to remove this article yesterday from our full vote. Our school committee comes here every year with a full presentation of what's going on with our school, and I don't think we should just be passing a budget for the Blue Hills Technical without some kind of update. And I did refer that the comments in the warrant only referred to half of the increase. So I was just interested in getting an update from the Blue Hills or wherever, and some idea of where that hundred thousand dollars is going or what it's needed for.
Yes. Mr. Asher?
George Asher, Chair of the Warrant Committee. I apologize for the oversight in the warrant. Unfortunately, the warrant was written before we got the full disclosure from the Blue Hills people, so we were unable to put it in before it went to the printer, but I know that they're here and they're happy to come and discuss the details with you. It was an oversight, it was not intentional.
So we'll recognize Stephen Moore and Matthew O'Malley, if I have the names correct? Nope, not here, okay. Yes, please, ma'am. Hang on a sec.
Joan Giancarschi, Precinct One. This is not speaking to the article, however, it is a question to the representative of Blue Hill Regional High School. At a former town meeting, you asked us to donate, not donate, but provide monies for the upgrade and improvement of Blue Hill Technicals High School. However, that would have to include not only Milton, but a variety of other communities as well. I would just like to know if the other communities, as with Milton, approved the request and where that is at this point. Thank you.
Gentlemen, would you make your way to the center podium and introduce yourselves
Hello, I am Matthew O'Malley. I am the representative on the Blue Hill Regional Tech School Committee. I will speak to the discrepancy in Article twenty-seven. In the warrant, it says that the assessment is fifty-one thousand nine-hundred-twenty-two dollars. That's inaccurate. The actual amount is ninety-eight thousand thirty-three dollars. That is reflected in the figures on page forty-four. What that is, is because of an increase of three students from Milton Public Schools to Blue Hill Regional Tech for fiscal year nineteen. The increase will be from forty-eight students to fifty-one students. This leads to a total of fifty-four thousand two-hundred-seventy-three dollars. Additionally, the assessed per pupil cost for 2019 will increase by nine-hundred-twelve dollars. This leads to an assessment of forty-three thousand dollars, sorry, forty-three thousand seven-hundred-sixty dollars. These numbers taken together reflect that ninety-eight thousand thirty-three dollar figure. In regards to the second question, I will introduce Superintendent James Quilia of Blue Hill Regional Tech, and he will deal with that question.
Thank you. I am not Mr. Moore. Mr. Mayor, Moore is much taller and has a few more hair follicles than I do. God bless him. It's good to be in front of the town membership again. This makes, I think, my tenth or twelfth visit here. As far as the project, first of all, just to reiterate on what Matt said, the total ninety-eight, he has broken up into three. There's one sum of money calculated for the increase of three students. There's one sum of money that is an increase in the state required contribution, and the other one is just a, there was a three percent increase in the operating budget. I tend to keep our budgets at three percent per year at that, and the thirty-one thousand reflects the five percent of the school that is from Milton. So together, it made the ninety-eight. Thank you, Matt. So if there's any other questions about that, you can ask either one of us. But as far as the project goes, believe it or not, nine towns did pass, this was an extremely daunting task to have a renovation project passed in a vocational district that encompasses nine towns. Not all of them have the same type of government. We have, we faced a city council, not a city council, town council in Randolph and in Braintree, and to our surprise, and as the result of an awful lot of hard work, question answering and so forth, and planning, we were able to secure the support in order to be able to assess the towns for approximately fifty percent of the project. The rest of it will be reimbursed by MSBA. We are in the process of gearing up for the renovations to begin the twenty-sixth of June. And it will commence throughout the summer, two full shifts. It's a rather accelerated process. It will commence, it'll keep going throughout the school year in the second shift, and then again, two shifts in the following summer. You may or may not, if they allow me to retire, you may see me just about leaving by the end of the project. I figured I would do my district a big favor, that if I actually did retire toward the closeout phase of the project, I leave, I give them one very important gift, and that's someone to blame for the punch list. So those of you that have been through projects before know that when you get to the punch list, you need someone to blame, and that can be me. All right. So if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them now. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Yes, Ms. Conlon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, would you join us in welcoming Matt O'Malley as our new representative to the Blue Hills Regional School? Many of you may know Matt. He was a volunteer for the Council on Aging for a few years and did great work for the Council on Aging. Recently, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen met to fill a vacancy that was created unfortunately by the passing of Festus Joyce, whom we remembered at our first evening last night. And Matt knows he has big shoes to fill, and he's jumped right in. It's been pretty evident that he's immersed himself in this budget, and he's gotten very familiar with the Blue Hills Regional School. So we're looking forward to his service in the years to come, and wanted to just congratulate him and thank him for jumping in, stepping up for this, to take on this role, which is very important. Blue Hills is one of our schools, and this is an important post. So thank you, Matt. Thank you, Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Corcoran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ned Corcoran, Precinct Three. I think somebody asked a question. We get a very nice presentation from our public school administration. We don't often know what happens at Blue Hills and where our money goes to. I can tell you, I'm fortunate enough that our youngest, who is adopted, is a junior at Blue Hills Regional. We're thrilled with it. The guidance counselors at the Pierce recognized that he had a different, an alternative capacity to learn. Blue Hills fit the bill. He's in the culinary program. He's going to work this summer at Abbey Park. And culinary is one of seventeen different shops, from electrical to auto repair to hairdressing, to nursing, to a range of things. It is a spectacular program. The kids spend one week in class in a traditional classroom setting. They spend the following week in shop with homework that's due on the Monday when they go back the following week. It's often a difficult period of time to shepherd your child through a homework process, but it is really an effective way for these kids to get hands-on experience in something that's alternative to a traditional setting in school. The last thing I would say is tomorrow, there's a very big rugby game. Milton High School will travel to Blue Hills and will play Blue Hills Regional tomorrow afternoon at four. I'm coaching both teams, so I'm not really sure I'm going to do. I think I may be an assistant referee and just run up and down the sidelines.
Well, we hope you win. My takeaway is for a table on Saturday night at Abbey Park, see Mr. Corcoran. Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all in favor of Article twenty-seven, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm sure you'll want to stay for the entire evening, because it's riveting. Back to page thirty-four for Article fourteen. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation fourteen. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19, Public Works. Total Public Works, two million five hundred eight thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Total Public, excuse me, subtotal Solid Waste Management, one million six hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-five. Total Public Works, four million one hundred and sixty-four thousand six ninety-four. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of four million one hundred and sixty-four thousand six ninety-four be raised from the tax levy. Of the total amount appropriated, the maximum sum authorized for salaries and wages is one million one hundred and forty-thousand three hundred and ninety-six. The Public Works Department is hereby authorized to sell at a private or public sale with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Equipment that is no longer needed by the department, it is further authorized to exchange or trade in old equipment for similar materials in the usual course of its operations to provide for replacement items. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article fourteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article fifteen. Recommended that the town appropriate six million thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the Water Enterprise Fund, and that four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand seven hundred be included in appropriations from the General Fund or indirect costs, and be allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, and that six million five-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars be raised and appropriated as follows. Water Enterprise Fund, Recommended FY-19, six million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand four sixty-eight. Subtotal direct costs, six million thirty-three thousand seven sixty-eight. Indirect, four hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred. Total, six million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article fifteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. We're going to skip Article sixteen, as you know, since it was passed in the consent agenda. We'll go to Article seventeen, page thirty-eight. Recommended that the town appropriate seven hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, that seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars be included in appropriations from the General Fund for indirect costs, and be allocated to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for funding, and that eight hundred thousand four hundred and eighty dollars be raised and appropriated as follows. Recommended FY-19. Total revenue, Stormwater Enterprise, eight hundred thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Subtotal direct costs, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty. Indirect costs, seventy-six thousand five hundred. Total, eight hundred thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, Mr. Mullen.
Peter Mullen, Precinct Two. I believe in the comment here, it says that yard waste collection expenses are going to be funded through this article. I'm wondering how that's part of the stormwater program.
Mr. Berkeley, can you answer that for us?
Hi, everyone. Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So yard waste is included and has been for the last couple of years since the Enterprise Fund was created. Basically, the whole premise of stormwater quality is to improve it, and by collecting yard waste, we take debris off the streets and from people's yards and reduce the amount of pollution that can be picked up by rainwater and transported into the water bodies. So it is a valid stormwater expense.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Felton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Deborah Felton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, Executive Director of Fuller Village. I just want to rise to say that the Board of Directors at Fuller Village have a lot of issues with the stormwater fee and how it has been implemented. And we will be returning in the fall with an article on this. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Corcoran. Did you wish to be recognized, sir? Yes.
Brendan McLaughlin, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. I'm also a member of Napa River Watershed Association. I just wanted to point out that we passed this in 2016 to help us keep the Napa River clean and prevent dog waste and all kinds of things from just washing into the river every time there's a storm. So this is really, this utility takes pressure off the residential tax base by charging a usage fee to just improve the river. We talked earlier about the master plan and opening up the waterfront. We want that water to be clean, so this is just a way for all of us, not just residential taxpayers or business property taxpayers, but also the large nonprofits that are in town to also contribute to helping to keep that water clean and to keeping the environment around Milton clean. Thank you.
Mr. Carr.
Henry Carr, Precinct Ten. Just a question about the stormwater bill as of this past year. I did ask a question. How is that stormwater bill generated? I was told that it should be based on the amount of square feet, whatever, that's not, the water doesn't rain off. Is next year, the bill going to include our assessed square footage? Because this year, just the total bill was given with no explanation of how that bill was generated, and I was just wondering if next year, is that going to be included in our bill?
Mr. Berkeley?
So the first question, how is the fee generated? We basically take the amount of impervious area that the town has in it and divide it by the budget number, and it comes up with a rate per square foot, and then your property is assessed depending on what type of property by that square footage. And I agree with you, I think your assessment of impervious area belongs on the bill. Just keep in mind that the majority of the properties in town fall into categories, and we don't actually bill you on your actual number, just because we try to keep administrative costs low. So you're grouped into one of the many tiers. So even though your square footage may indicate a certain number, your bill may not actually be that number times the rate because you're in a grouped category.
Yes, ma'am.
Julia Lee, Precinct Ten. I have a question about the stormwater runoff. There are properties along Truman Parkway that are absorbing a large amount of stormwater due to the fact that water drainage has not been done at the residences that go above on Rush Hill Road. We are paying our stormwater bills in our area, but we are not happy because the kind of cleanup that, you know, mentioned is not really happening for us. So that's one thing. I love what someone said about the, you know, stormwater fee being important because this is one way of keeping the Napa River clean, which is what we all want. At the same time, there's an issue there, and I wonder too about, you know, towns along before Milton. Do we have some sort of agreement with those towns to ensure that they are indeed taking care of their portion of the river? We want to keep the river clean, too.
Do you have a reply, Mr. Berkeley?
Just a general comment. So your stormwater fee is not based solely on hydraulic characteristics of your property or the surrounding properties. It covers the entire stormwater system and the burden that the town has to maintain that. So you shouldn't think that the fee you pay is solely isolated to your own property. It's covering the town's responsibility.
Seeing no other speakers, all those in favor of Article seventeen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. Article eighteen. Just a note, ladies and gentlemen, you should have seen a new, I don't know whether it's blue or green sheet, but it's referring to Table Five on the table as you entered, which is found on page fifty-nine of your warrant. I just mentioned it because it summarizes the borrowing for the town. We're about to do another borrowing article. The Town Treasurer informs me that if you compare the two tables, the total, which you see, the total line there is the same between what you're seeing on this sheet and what's printed in the warrant. What is different is they have distributed the amounts that were printed in the warrant out to the two new rows you see in red to give you further amounts of detail. So if there's a question to that, we'll ask the Town Treasurer to address. That's just a general comment on borrowing. Moving on to number eighteen. Recommended the sum of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-two be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article, and that to meet said appropriation, the Treasurer be authorized to issue with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, bonds or secured notes in the amount of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars, and that the town vote to accept grants under the provisions of Master and Law, Chapter Ninety, in amounts of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars, and that said reimbursement from the state, one hundred percent, to be restored upon their receipt to the Town Treasurer. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of this article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. We'll go to Article nineteen. Article nineteen also is included in one of your blue-green sheets here. I'll point out, as I read it, that if you go to the, you'll see the bold text has been lengthened by about a third, and that's a phrase that has been added into all of our borrowing articles throughout this town meeting. Recommended that the sum of one million dollars be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's water system, including costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow one million dollars under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, Number Five of the General Laws, as amended or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Mass Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. And this is the new section, starting with "and." And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ted Hayes, Precinct Three. So I noticed the request this year is for one million dollars. The previous five, perhaps longer years, past years, it's been five hundred thousand. The comment refers to a program of zero percent interest loans that was, and an annual allocation in that program of five hundred thousand. So I'm looking for a little clarification. Has the program changed? Did we actually mean to appropriate five hundred thousand instead of a million? If we are appropriating a million, is five hundred thousand zero percent interest, and the rest of it is our dime? Anyway, I'd like some clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Berkeley?
So again, Chase Berkeley, Public Works Director. So to answer your question, we are asking for a million dollars. Five hundred thousand of that money is from an MWRA zero percent interest loan. The way the MWRA distributes their money, they have authorized under their local assistance program, five million dollars over ten years. So every year at town meeting, you've been authorizing five hundred thousand dollars. In our discussions with the Capital Committee this year, and internally in Public Works, we've requested to increase the amount of capital work. We want to replace more pipes than we have previously. So we've asked for more money for that. So the other five hundred thousand dollars will be through bonded capital, to be determined. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak to Article nineteen? If not, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article twenty, also in your blue-green sheet, it has the same phrase appended at the end as we just read. Recommended that the sum of three hundred and ten thousand be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's stormwater system, including costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow three hundred and ten thousand dollars under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Sections Seven One and Eight Fifteen of the General Laws as amended or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payments of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, this also requires a, nope, this is a, let me just check.
Regular vote? Harvey?
Two-thirds. All in favor of Article twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article twenty-one. Let me just check my page. Article twenty-one is also in the same packet with the same phrase appended. Recommended that the sum of nine hundred and fourteen thousand be appropriated for the purpose of financing the capital needs of the town's sewer system, including costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight Five of the General Laws as amended or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Mass Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? This requires a two-thirds vote. Seeing none, all in favor of Article twenty-one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article twenty-two. I just wanted to alert the booth, this is the one with the video. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19, Board of Health, two hundred and four thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of two hundred and four thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? We do have a short presentation. Would you like to come up and speak, Ms. Cincella? Would you like to speak first or video first?
I'd like to speak first.
Speak first, off you go.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I'm Caroline Cincella, the Health Director in Milton. Together with the Milton Public Schools, Police Department, Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, the Milton Women's Club, and the Milton Junior Women's Club, and through a state budget earmark created by Senator Walter Timmeltie, Milton residents now have a way to get help finding a trained professional for mental health and addiction problems. The Interface Referral Service through William James College will provide free and confidential help for Milton community members of all ages, so that they can more easily navigate our complex mental health care system when a psychological problem arises. One in five of us will experience a mental health problem in our lifetimes, yet only a few of us will get the help we need because of the complexity and stigma involved with addiction and mental health. I hope you will share this information with your relatives, friends, and neighbors. Interface is used by many other communities with great success. We are proud to have this new service, which started May first, available in the town of Milton. I want to share with you this four-minute video, which explains the service further, and I want to thank Superintendent Mary Gormly and Stephanie O'Keefe at the Milton Public Schools for producing this video. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rich Fernandez, President and CEO of Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, Milton. I'm pleased to announce that BID Milton has teamed up with the town of Milton to offer Milton residents free access to mental health telephone hotline. It's called Interface Referral Services. If you or a loved one is suffering from a mental health condition such as anxiety, or depression, or even addiction, the trained professionals at Interface can connect you with professional services to help you get better. Make the call. It's free and confidential.
Laurie, at the police department, we've been seeing a significant increase in calls related to mental health issues. We're seeing it a lot related to substance use disorders and overdoses, which have a lot related to mental health issues. We're seeing it in schools a lot with cyberbullying, kids being harassed, which has linked to depression.
Well, I know that mental health problems are very common, and I think that the Interface Referral Service is able to connect people of all ages to the right practitioner for them.
We spend a lot of time with our school nurse, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, trying to connect families with the proper resources to support them with their mental health challenges or their needs. So this would be a great opportunity for our students.
I agree, and students may exhibit behavioral health challenges or needs at a very young age, and students of all ages can benefit from professional counseling beyond what the school can offer. The Interface Referral Service will allow our adjustment counselors, nurses, and professional staff to provide a phone number, which will help families connect immediately to services that can range from support with depression or anxiety and even things such as marital support for adults in the family.
So I'm really looking forward to it. I'm excited about it, and I can't wait till Florida starts employing the system.
Agreed. It's a great service for our community. Because mental health problems and substance use disorders can be really uncomfortable to talk about or to share, they can be stigmatized. But it's really important that if you need help, that you're able to get it, and Interface is something that is there for you to be able to access when you need the help.
You know, one of the great things about living in Milton, whether it's with the police department or the schools or wherever, is that we're a caring community. And unfortunately, there's still a lot of stigma associated with mental illness. We want to support everyone, our neighbors, our loved ones, so that they get the support they need, because we know that the earlier in the cycle that they get treatment, the better the outcome.
Absolutely.
So Milton is a caring community, and we all have friends and family members struggling with either a mental health issue or substance abuse. But there is help. The Interface Referral Service is staffed with professionals Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to help every family member, to help people of all ages. Please, please don't hesitate to make the call. We all want our family members and friends to be healthy. A healthier community is a stronger community.
Interface isn't for emergency situations. If someone is suicidal or they're having an episode and they need rehabilitation services immediately, make sure that your loved one calls an emergency hotline number or 911.
Absolutely. Call 911 anytime there's an emergency or even tell us whether there's an emergency.
Seeing none, all in favor of Article 22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's unanimous. Article 23. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19, library, total library, $1,478,601, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $1,478,601 be raised from the tax levy. Mr. Volcarelli, you're recognized.
Before we vote on this article, I'm John Volcarelli. I'm Chair of the Milton Public Library Board of Trustees and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. I rise on behalf of my fellow trustees, Hyanthus Kritzlow, Chris Hodlin, Ray Zwackiel, Paul Hayes, Carrie McHugh, Sindhu Meyer, and newly-elected Board Members Phil Driscoll and Chiara Frank Willucci, to pay tribute to Herb Voight, who many of you know passed away suddenly this winter. Herb was an extremely accomplished individual with many diverse interests. I am only speaking briefly to his contributions to the Library Board of Trustees. Herb was on the board when I joined and was a vital contributor to the work of the board. He served on a number of subcommittees, including Building and Grounds, Art, Long Range Planning, Trust Funds Review, and the Kidder Branch. He was responsible for securing a long-term lease of the Nathaniel Kidder portrait now displayed in the reading room. Herb worked doggedly on a number of other projects and was working on that most confounding of library issues, additional parking, when he passed away. He was always looking for ways to improve the technological and environmental interaction of the library with the community. The board missed his contributions right away, but is working on fitting ways to honor his memory. I would ask that you rise and we observe a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. The board this April also said goodbye to another stalwart member, Andrea Gordon, who retired from the board. Andrea had returned after a hiatus to serve another three-year term as trustee. Andrea wasted no time in making contributions and was responsible for conceiving and overseeing the construction and deployment of the little free libraries around Milton. She also arranged and oversaw the badly needed refurbishment of the Kidder portrait and frame. She was a strong advocate for the patrons of the library, and we will miss her wisdom, hard work, and steady voice. To Andrea, I say, thank you, but there is always a chance to return next April if you decide absence from the board is too dull. Please join me in giving Andrea a round of applause and please give... and give me a hand in welcoming Phil Driscoll and Chiara Frank Willucci. Thank you very much.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article, I'm sorry, Mr. Mahalchuk.
Mike Mahalchuk, Precinct 7. I just have a question about the comment. It says that we were supposed to spend 13% of our appropriation of materials, $192,000. And I look above, and it's recommended that we spend $150,000 on materials. That must be an explanation for that.
Hi, I'm Will Adamsick. I'm your library director. Mike, thank you for the question. It's a good question. The difference between, you know, the 190 and the 150 that is there is made up for from the library revolving fund, which comes later on, it's a later article, but there is a library revolving fund that is for fines, lost books. That makes up the difference. It's ranged between $45,000 to $50,000 a year to make up that 13%.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 23, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 24. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19, total cemetery, $874,500, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of $847,620 be raised from the tax levy and the sum of $26,385 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. The department is hereby authorized to sell or exchange old equipment to furnish additional funds for new equipment. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, Mr. Mullin.
Peter Mullin, Precinct 2. I noticed in the comment that the warrant committee says that the $26,000 difference here is primarily a one-time buyback of unused sick leave time. I'm wondering whether or not the town has any policy with regard to the accumulation of sick leave. And I think this was mentioned in one of the other appropriations we have tonight. I wonder if anybody can tell us the extent to which this is a problem.
Ms. Cullen?
These are contractual provisions that are included in the union agreements, but a couple of years ago, we did eliminate sick leave buyback from the union agreements for new hires after a certain date. I don't have the particular date, but it was a couple of years ago. So anyone who's been hired since then is not eligible for sick leave buyback, but we do obviously have a number of employees who have been working for the town for a long time, who are eligible for it under the union contracts that have been negotiated.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 24, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's unanimous. Article 25. Recommended that the town authorize the continued use of the Park and Recreation Revolving Fund pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 18 of the general bylaws of the town, and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19. Total parks and recreation, $534,196, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $534,196 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's unanimous. Article 26. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19. Total schools, $49,625,050, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $49,425,050 be raised from the tax levy, and that the sum of $200,000 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. I'd like to recognize Chairman Donahue of the School Committee, whose wife is not pregnant this year, and so he's here with us tonight, so...
Thankfully, yes. Good evening. Kevin Donahue, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, Chair of the School Committee. I have several brief comments, I promise, before the budget presentation. Last year, the School Committee spent a great deal of time working on our budget in an effort to minimize the consequences of the non-contingent budget and maximize the positive effects of the contingent budget. I would like to thank Town Meeting for supporting the contingent budget last year. The positive effects on the schools have been tremendous. This year, we spent a similar extensive amount of time discussing our enrollment, enrollment trends, and the consequences of these trends. As you may remember, last year, I discussed the effect that our academic success of our public schools was having on enrollment. Specifically, that overall enrollment was up approximately 12% over the past 10 years, from approximately 3,600 students in 2007, 2008, to approximately 4,000 students this year. You may also recall that this enrollment is distributed asymmetrically, with an approximately 25% increase in enrollment at the elementary level, from approximately 1,700 students in 2007 to 2,100 students in the current academic year. The magnitude of this increase means that we are effectively running a fifth elementary school, population-wise, within the confines of our four elementary school buildings. The effects have been dramatic. Our elementary schools were built in the early 2000s to house 14 strands of elementary classes. That is, 14 first grades, 14 second grades, 14 third grades, et cetera. Beginning approximately 10 years ago, we began adding a 15th classroom at each grade level. That was the new normal until five years ago, at which time we had our first 16-strand academic class, the rising fourth graders. Beginning next fall, at a minimum, we will have 16 strands in the fourth grade, the second grade, the first grade, and kindergarten. That's two-thirds of our elementary levels. To accommodate this growth, we have cannibalized specialist classrooms, turned them into elementary classrooms, including music, computer, foreign language classrooms at Glover, art, computer, foreign language, music rooms at Cunningham and Collicott, and music and foreign language rooms at Tucker. Well, this certainly produces some suboptimal educational arrangements, like music classes on the Cunningham and Collicott stage or in the Tucker Library, and the increased number of specialist classes held in the main elementary classrooms. And it also serves to exacerbate crowding at pickup and drop-off. These issues are navigable. However, our main concern now is physical building space. We have sufficient remaining specialist classrooms for three or so more classrooms. Therefore, while there remains a short-term solution of sorts, based on our enrollment projections, this space will be exhausted in two to three years, at which time we will literally have no classroom space for additional elementary students. As a result, we are now at a critical time where if we are not proactive in crafting a solution, possibly, likely, a multi-phase solution in the next two to three years, we will have a dramatic situation on our hands. The School Committee plans to spend the next several months discussing this issue and potential solutions further among ourselves. However, the ultimate solution will affect our entire town. We therefore invite other boards, community members, and parents and guardians to participate in this conversation with us over the summer. At the Fall Town Meeting, we'll seek to present a warrant article to ensure the formalization of these other stakeholders in the evaluation process and subsequent decision-making process. Thank you. And with that, I will turn to our annual budget presentation. I'm pin-shooting tonight for Dr. Pavelczek, and we have been asked to make the presentation briefer than in years past. So we have 10 slides, six on the current budget, four on projected operational needs beyond the next year. And it has been teased extensively all night. So with that, I'll move over here so I can see the slides. So the purpose of this slide is to demonstrate graphically the allocation of our budget. And I'll say bottom line to lead with, we are asking for an additional $2.18 million for contractual costs, legal obligations, goods and service inflishment, and one additional FTE, an elementary teacher. We are required to break our budget down into seven categories as per state requirements. These are those seven categories. You can see the vast majority of our budget is spent on a combination of special education and direct instruction, with the remainder supporting facilities and technology and policy, et cetera. Next slide, please. So it was teased, but this is all you see. I'll take it, sure. So here we see our budget growth over time. You'll notice that five of our seven categories are static, or essentially static, over approximately the past 10 years, while two demonstrate dramatic growth, and that's special education and instruction. And this is to be expected, and this has obviously been the trend over years past. Here we see the effect that enrollment is having on our current budget and our future budget. So we are at the line on the image at the bottom, at the end of the actual data and the beginning of the projected data. We are projecting an approximately 150 additional students in the next three years at the elementary level, approximately 90 additional students at the middle school level over the next three years, and approximately 120 additional students at the high school level over the next three years. This slide demonstrates the breakdown of the big-ticket items for the additional funding we're requesting this year over and above last year's allocation. 1.55 million for salary increases, $200,000 for special education transportation, $196,000 for additional special education tuition... for additional special education tuition, $65,000 for the additional elementary teacher, and additional monies for inflationary costs on materials, utilities, and to purchase additional Here's our budget breakdown in those seven categories, both whole-dollar amounts and percentage. And again, you see the outlier, as in years past, is special education with a year-to-year increase of 8% relative to last year. Thank you. That concludes this year's budget presentation. However, I feel my obligation to discuss a little bit of our anticipated needs. So, with these expected enrollment trends, we are anticipating the need for additional six elementary students at the elementary level, one of which is in this year's fiscal year budget. We are anticipating the need for additional three educators at the middle school level, and additional five educators at the high school level over the coming years. It's a lot of teachers. This year, we had a discussion amongst ourselves in terms of appropriate staffing. Almost as bad as 38-year-olds in a class as 318-year-olds in a class, but the eight-year-olds won by a nose, and we elected to ask for the additional elementary teacher as opposed to additional high school teacher. But, that was the first runner-up, and will likely be at the top of our requests for future years. Additional requests likely to come in the future years, transitions teacher and preschool coordinator. So, the transition teacher was left off the override budget, and it remains a position that we would like to fill. We think that there is a significant amount of value there, and when possible, we will discuss the addition of this position over the coming years in conjunction with our additional needs based simply on enrollment. And similar with the preschool coordinator, there's a significant need for us to coordinate both across our varied preschool programs and provide vertical integration as we receive students from early intervention, and then as we pass those students along to the high school, to the kindergarten teachers as they move out of the pre-K program. Thank you very much.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Morash, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, at the conclusion of this vote, I would request permission to speak to the town meeting.
Granted.
Thank you, sir. I rise to support the school department's budget. Some of you may know I'm a big supporter of the public schools, and especially the public schools in this town. It's the one thing that brings people into Milton. I really support the forward-looking process here, where we all know what we're looking at from the school department in the next few years, and what it means to staff up appropriately for what we have to do to make this town continue to be where it is today, a leader in education. And I appreciate all the work that's done by the school committee. I urge you a yes vote on this issue. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Ms. White, I know you're waiting for something else, right? Yes. All those in favor of Article 26, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. And your sidekick.
Can't get away from him. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Members of the town meeting, I need to first acknowledge someone in the room that hasn't been acknowledged yet. I never thought I'd be in a town meeting and not see Alexander Whiteside on the planning board. For all the work he's done, I think we should recognize him. He has a wealth of knowledge for this town, so thank you, Alex. This will be my last time speaking at town meeting, I promise. John Kennedy said that if we, those who are stuck and concern themselves with the past and the present will never see the future. Well, my wife and I have seen the future. After 27 years in this town, and I don't know how many years at town meeting, which is, we have made a decision to move on as we look at retirement. I'll still be around in some respects, because Judy won't let me. But, I want to say it's been an honor, an honor and a pleasure to make your friendships. I misspoke at the last town meeting. There was an article by the Historical Society about raising the limit on what town, when a building would be historical. And I said that while my house is very nice, and I love my house, nothing historic ever happened there. And then I thought about it, and I was wrong. There were a lot of historical things that happened in that little room up on the second floor. You were all part of it. In that second-floor, we got new schools after being beaten twice, and I turned to State Senator Brian Joyce and said, "I can do no more with these people. You better do something." And it looks like he did a long time ago. You all were part of that solution. We had overrides to keep fire stations open, to keep town services where they are, to make this town, in the words of John Cohen, "A little better than Dorchester," I believe was the quote I heard from John Cohen many times ago. And we did that together. Your friendship has been so dear to me. I will never forget any of you. Those of you that are here in this hall now, those of us that are not here, those that pushed us, that made us make this a better place. My mother was my Girl Scout leader, believe it or not. I somehow snuck into that troop up to a certain age, and she told her Girl Scouts, "The thing about being a good Girl Scout is, make the place better than you found it." We all did that together, and for that, I am always honored to be in your presence. I'd like to just say thank you to the people that run this town, the elected officials. I can't say enough about the town employees that we have here. You should give them everything you can, because without them, this town is nowhere near what it is and where it needs to be. We are looking forward. You guys are doing a great job in the town government stud committee work. It's terrific. You've taken that where no one thought we could ever go with some of these things. So, I just want to say thank you again. I wish you all luck in the future. You know how to find me. I'll still be at BU doing something over there, and you'll always find me down in Selkow at some point. I will miss you all dearly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Judy White, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9, and I got wind last night that Steve and his beautiful wife were going to be selling their house. And I just wanted to rise and thank Steve for all that he's done for our town. About 20 years ago, we had a very tough election with Representative Joseph Manning being defeated, and we both worked very hard on different campaigns. And I went to a meeting to talk about renovating our schools, and this man sat down beside me, and it was Steve, and I had watched him just win a very hard-fought election. And he sat beside me, and he said, "Do you want to run this thing with me?" And I said to myself, "Oh, no." But, really, I just want to thank Steve for all his work on these beautiful school buildings. I think it's, what, 12 years, or I can't even remember how many years, but it was a wonderful journey. We mobilized over 300 volunteers, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you have done for the town of Milton. You have really left it a better place than it was. Thank you.
Folks, we'll resume. We've completed Article 27 already. We're off to Article 28. Recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19. Consolidated facilities, total $1,214,423, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $1,214,423 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 28, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article 29, recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY-19. Interest in maturing debt, total $3,903,560, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $203,300 be raised from funds released from the overlay reserve, and $3,702,60 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Pre-Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and I thank the schedule we receive today. I would like to know how much the debt that is going to be issued this August is, and the bigger picture here is, and we discussed some of this with the capital improvement discussion earlier, is it would be helpful for the next annual town meeting for us to know what the debt capacity is for this town in comparison to peer towns, and in comparison with what the rating agencies have to say as to what a town our size should have. We've heard about the need to issue debt in the future. There's a substantial amount of debt in this warrant that we've approved. We need to have the big picture as to what is the capacity for our town to be able to be rated highly as it has been, and to continue the high rating. What are our peer towns doing, and what do the rating agencies have to say about the amount of debt that we can afford to fund in the next several annual budgets? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Neely, that was a request for a future request of information. Do I understand correctly?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator. I also asked to have the amount of the debt that is scheduled to be issued in the red line at the second from the bottom.
Chair recognizes Mr. McAuliffe.
Jim McAuliffe, Town Treasurer, Precinct 7. Right now, we have a band for $7.2 million and change. We're going to roll that into a bond in August, and we'll probably also put another $4.6 on that. And that's where we come up with the figure for the interest. Any questions? Yeah? $11.2 million, yeah.
Anyone else wish to speak to Article 29? All in favor of Article 29, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. We already passed Article 30 in the consent agenda, so we'll move to Article 31. Recommended that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $82,750 for the purposes set forth in this article, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of $82,750 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Submitted by the Board of Selectment, does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 31, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article 32, recommended that the town appropriate the sum of $250,000 for the reserve fund for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2018, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $250,000 be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 32, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article 33, recommended that the town vote to appropriate $50,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $50,000 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Submitted by the Board of Selectment, does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, Mr. Gaius.
Cheryl Togias, Precinct 9, and Chair of the Planning Board. I would like to give the body an update on some of the activities of the Planning Board that address affordable housing. This year, four affordable units came online at Woodmere off of Brushhill Road. Those have been sold and are occupied, three of those by previous Milton residents, and so we welcome one unit, a new resident, to Milton. Also, there were two projects that were approved that will have financial contributions to this Affordable Housing Trust. One is Marine Way off of Highland, and that'll be a $50,000 contribution, and Woodmere Farm off of Ford Ranch Road, and that'll be a $100,000 contribution. Additionally, 131 Elliott or the Hendry's Building eventually will bring four affordable units. And then the zoning that we, as a body, passed at prior town meetings, when those projects come forward, the Carberry property will bring six affordable units, and the Ice House, one to two units depending upon the application. So, we're hoping that we can continue to make some progress on producing affordable housing units in town.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 33, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article 34, folks, I'm going to skip reading the bulk of the table and just read the summary portions. Recommended that the town continue the revolving funds created under Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, and established by votes of the annual town meeting as indicated in the tabulation below. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Mullen.
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. I think this is the second or third town meeting where we've used this table of revolving funds rather than having separate articles. The warrant doesn't say who submitted this article. I believe that it's collaboration with regard to all of the revolving funds that we have. I think there's two pieces of information that we don't have that we should have in the future. I don't think we need to get that for tonight, but I think we should have what the fund balance is, and I think we should have how much revenue the various board took into their fund during the prior year. You know, because we go to, have to go to press at the middle of a year, it's probably going to have to be the preceding year's revenue, but it would be interesting and, I think, helpful to know both of those things with regard to these revolving funds.
Is this a request for future submissions or tonight's?
Future.
Thank you. So noted. Would anyone else like to speak to this article? Yes, Mr. Hayes.
Ted Hayes, Precinct 3. Thank you. So, I just want to point out that we did ask for that information before, and it is included in this year's town report, which has been posted online, and it does give us all that information for the nine revolving funds in this article. I would love to see the park revolving fund added to this list. It is probably about $450,000 in activity, and it is usually authorized through the park appropriation as opposed to this article, but I would like to see that reported on as well. If this can be provided for the town report, perhaps it could be provided to the warrant committee for publication. Who knows? Anyway, it has been done, and it's very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this article? All in favor of Article 34, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article 35, we finished- Article 35, we finished last night. We're on 236. Recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws by striking the following sentence in Paragraph 2, "Development Components," in quotes, of subsection R of Section 3, "Two or more bedrooms shall not be permitted," quote, and by substituting the following sentence, quote, "Two-bedroom apartments shall also be permitted, provided that the total number of bedrooms, studio, and one-bedroom with den apartments being deemed to include one bedroom shall not exceed 16, and provided that two parking spaces shall be provided for each two-bedroom apartment," end quote, and to act on anything relating thereto. Mr. Gaius.
Cheryl Togias, Precinct 9, and Chair of the Planning Board. This article relates to the Parkway Plan Unit Development, which is otherwise known as the Ice House Development. The town received a letter from the Attorney General's Office, and upon review of the zoning, cautioned that the ---- in violation of Fair Housing Act, and we were advised to speak to town council about language that could rectify that, and that is what this language is intended to do.
Mr. Sloan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Sloan, Precinct 10. I thought that I understood what this article was about until I received the warrant and read a little bit more, especially the Warrant Committee's comment section on this. I understand, from following the Planning Board's discussions, what the Attorney General's Office said, and I thought that I understood how the Planning Board, after speaking with town council, was planning to respond to that, which was to add two-bedroom apartments in place in addition to the one-bedroom apartment option that had been approved in the zoning that we approved. I asked if we could see for some context tonight, the text of the original article that we approved, because I think the challenge here for the understanding is that this was just excerpted out of that zoning. And on the second page of that, you'll see that what was approved was 12 units of housing, and each of the units could have one bedroom in it. So essentially, what we approved was 12 bedrooms in this residential component to this development. And part of the reason, the Planning Board obviously wasn't trying to discriminate against anyone, part of the reason that these one-bedroom apartments were chosen was because of parking requirements. This is a very small parcel, and to fit all of the components that were proposed for this development in, lots of things got smaller, including the residential component, and that's why we approved 12 units with one bedroom. Now, I thought that what the Planning Board was going to do, on the advice of town council, was add the option of two-bedroom apartments to those 12 units, but what I've learned is that the number of bedrooms has been increased to 16, and that has other ramifications, and most importantly, the number of parking spaces that are required, and you can see that referenced in the Warrant Committee's comment, that additional parking spaces may be required because a developer could choose any number of ratios between one and two-bedroom apartments. And I did some of the math and some of the different scenarios, and one scenario could add an additional 10 parking spaces to this. And one Planning Board member last year reminded us in these discussions that I think that the phrase was, "You can't build it if you can't park it," that basically, if the parking requirement can't be met by a developer's proposal, then we can't put all of these apartments in there. But with a project that got such good scrutiny and such good attention from the Planning Board to go forward, this to me seems like a situation where we're looking ahead to a difficult situation when we get into the special permit process, where a developer may be asking for concessions and adjustments to make this all work. And I would like to understand why, again in response to the Attorney General's comments, that we're not just adding the two-bedroom component, but that the article's recommendation is to increase the number of bedrooms from 12 to 16.
Mr. Gaius. Not yet.
So this is changing the bylaw to allow for two-bedroom units, acknowledging that two-bedroom units under our zoning generally require additional parking spaces, so we've made that adjustment, but it does not allow for an increased density. So if someone came to us with a project that included two-bedroom units, then there would be less units overall, because they would only be able to park it to the same degree that they could park it with the lesser number of bedrooms with all one-bedrooms. I hope that's clear.
You have a follow-up, Mr. Sloan?
We have no project before us, and the zoning is allowed to provide a developer with different alternative ways to lay out the property depending upon their particular program, so it's still allowing for a certain amount. So if they build more bedrooms, more units, that means there'd be less commercial allowed because we're only allowed to build so much on the site under the zoning. We're not looking at a very particular, we don't have a project before us under the zoning right now.
More, Mr. Sloan, your follow-up then.
Thank you. I think added to that, the fact that we do not have a proposal before us, that we do not have a developer, that expanding the scope of that potentially, the residential component to 16 units is not appropriate at this point in time. And I would move to amend this article to change the recommended number of 16 to 12, so that the number of apartments shall not exceed 12 units, not exceed 12.
Understood. Is there a second to that? Are you offering that as a friendly amendment or just?
Yes, sir.
We'll see if the Planning Board...
Let's see.
...reacts. Since we'll need their opinion anyways, we'll let them consult for a moment. Mr. Gaius.
The Planning Board does not accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. The motion has been seconded, however, so was there any discussion to this motion to amend from 16 to 12 units, one-bedroom units? Yes, sir.
Terry McNeil, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Sorry, I just moved from Precinct 3. So I rise, I was going to speak on the comments initially, but I specifically oppose the amendment because of the point that was just raised. There is not a project, and Mr. Gaius, I think, aptly put it, the purpose of this board is to approve a box, it doesn't sound very nice, but it is a box, an envelope for a project to be developed, and that envelope's not changing. And what we're trying to do is leave an opportunity for the Planning Board or the special permit process, the process that's supposed to review a specific project, not 300 people in this room, because God knows what we'll come up with, but the actual board charged with that in a public process to review an actual proposal, that's what this board is authorized to do. This town meeting is the legislature that sets the box, sorry if I sound like I'm lecturing people, this sets the box for a project to be approved, and so we shouldn't start to negotiate what we all want there. I mean, if I asked who wants a Trader Joe's, five people would raise their hands and forward oppose it. But this is to set and a process in place in a project that's been approved, modifying it to recognize that there are fair housing obligations that we need to respect, which is another thing folks in this room care a lot about. So I really caution, not just because of the hour, that we start to debate a project that we all have in our heads, because that's not the purpose of the article, and the amendment, while understood, and I think would be perfect to raise in the actual special permit process, in my opinion, is inappropriate here, so I would oppose the motion. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend? Yes, ma'am.
Priscilla Hayden Sloan, Precinct 10. I rise to support the amendment because I think what we're talking about here is a precedent for the town. This is the only project before the town that does not have a developer, and that makes it extremely different. We have developers coming before us all the time and requesting changes and additions, and I think to grant a change to a bylaw, when we don't have anyone requesting a change, is a precedent, and we should acknowledge that. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend? We'd like to hear from the Warrant Committee on their opinion on the motion. You're voting. Thank you.
I'm going to repeat what I said, that the reason that this is being done is it has been suggested by the Attorney General that the way the article is written, it could be construed to be in violation of the Fair Housing Act. And again, if a developer came forward with two-bedroom units and they had more parking spaces, what they can build on the site otherwise would be reduced, because as was said, you can build what you can park. There are limitations on how much coverage you can have on the lot.
Mr. Asher, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, the Warrant Committee unanimously rejects this amendment.
Thank you. We'll move to a vote on the motion to amend. All in favor, it takes a simple majority to amend this. All in favor, motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion's defeated. We'll proceed to the main article as unamended. Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor, it requires a two-thirds vote, by the way. All in favor of Article 36, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 37, recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws by changing the zoning map, which is incorporated, you know, I'll pause for a minute here, folks. So, we've got three left, all zoning articles. I'm with you. Okay. Okay. By changing the zoning map, which is incorporated into said bylaws as follows. Amend said zoning bylaws by modifying the zoning map referred to in Section 11, sorry, 2B, so as to revoke the current zoning map and to substitute the attached zoning map. The revised map is a new format but does not alter any existing boundaries. Yes, sir.
William Clark, Planning Director. The zoning map was last published in a town warrant in 1958. The new plan that we're proposing is in the back of the current book that you have. Our current version was created by digitizing a draftsman plan back in the 1990s. The old version shows streets, but not lots. In some areas, it was kind of difficult to figure out, or it was a challenge to figure out where your house would be. The new version that we have before you is parcel-based. If I keep moving in on this, I can get very close and figure out where your house is. You should be able to find your house by the parcel, just by increasing the size. This was created by our GIS department. It does not change any zoning. All it does is change the format of the plan. It has all of the, what we're doing is we're creating a plan that uses layers, and if I can get to the top corner, each one of these codes up here, and we use state, I can go in under Layers, I can turn the state off. Everything is the underlying layers. Eventually, we'll be able to take and put all of our PUDs on here. You can turn them on, you can turn them off, because when you know that when you have a planned unit development or a PUD, it is an overlay. There's still something underneath it. We can turn off that layer. This is that base map that everything is based off of. New technology for today.
Anyone wish to speak to this article? Not coming down. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 37, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I declare a two-thirds vote. Unanimous. Article 38, I'll read the article and the recommendation, so remember, folks, this is where our Rule 5 applies when we vote in a little bit. So if you are in favor of the article as I'm about to read it, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to the article, you would vote no. So, Article 38, to see if the town will vote to authorize and direct the Board of Selectment to lease the town landing, including the former Milton Police Station located at 25 Wharf Street, and boat storage areas to the Milton Yacht Club for a term of up to 15 years, which will be coterminous with the existing Chapter 91 license, which names the Milton Yacht Club as a pre-existing water-dependent user. The Milton Yacht Club is a 501(c)(3) which was chartered in 1902 to promote yachting sports and the study of nautical science, and maintains the public's access right away for the benefit of the residents of the town of Milton and surrounding communities, and to act on anything relating thereto. This was a citizen's petition. The Warrant Committee recommends the town vote no. I mentioned we would have citizens that may want, wish to speak. I'll recognize Mr. Spencer Day for the purpose of explaining his petition. Mr. Day, you have 10 minutes.
Okay. I was hoping I'd be able to see that there. My name is Spencer Day. I'm a former town meeting member. I live at 7 Cottage Place. And what I've got up in front of you, hopefully, is if you go to the next slide. I really just wanted to say, yes, Milton has a waterfront, and it has come up in some of the conversation earlier this evening. We at, and by the way, I'm treasurer of the Milton Yacht Club at this time. I just want to talk a little bit about, and I won't take up too much of your time because I know we're getting near the end here. Forty-five years ago, when I was in my twenties, I came down here to Milton Landing, and this was before I was a resident, and I went canoeing there on a regular basis with my fiance, who I did later marry, and we moved in 35 years ago to where we currently live. And I couldn't have known back then that my interest in the waterfront would have changed during that period so completely. I was, at the time, only interested in utilizing it for canoeing purposes, but that changed over time, because, you know, when I was canoeing out there, I realized you get out there a little ways, and this is the ocean out here. So part of what I was going to talk about tonight was that the waterfront is, yes, of course, it's a nice place to visit, nice to look at the surroundings, and, you know, see the birds and the eagles, the bald eagles and so forth down at that location. It's also the entryway to the Atlantic Ocean. And, you know, we're really not talking about it from that perspective, but the people who are members of the Milton Yacht Club, I know they're not traveling to Europe or anything of that nature, but they own, for the most part, seagoing vessels. they own, for the most part, seagoing vessels. There's other, and I put myself, my former self, when I was a young man, in that category of being a canoeing user. And I call that inland boating, because it's really not safe for smaller boats, including most rowing boats, to go further than about the gas tank out by Old Colony Yacht Club. The current landing place, the current Milton Landing is one of, yes, it's one of three historical landing places. It's pretty interesting. I was doing some research on this, and, and look at that. Exactly 100 years ago, there was a Milton Landing Committee that had been undertaken, I think, starting around, excuse me, 1915, or 1916. And at the time, the issue was related to encroachments by various parties, and the question was raised about whether the landing could be utilized for commercial purposes by what was at the time Godfrey Cole. And, and yes, it was largely an industrial zone, and it stayed that way until about 2003, '04, when the current 88 Wharf condominiums were completed. And I thought it was worth pointing out that in 1918, the Town Meeting Report of the Milton Landing Committee went on record as saying, and it's quoted, "The Milton Boat Club again rented the old police station for $50 to cover the year ending March 1st, 1918, and acted as the committee's agent in boating matters. The club has proved a satisfactory tenant," and, and this bolded this, "it is to be regretted that more Milton citizens do not belong to it." Well, and that's currently our regret also. If you just go to the next slide, please. And I've got a picture of a building that we all want to preserve, and, you know, to preserve as part of the character of the town of Milton. I won't go too far into it, because it's kind of self-explanatory. This picture came off of the Milton Historical Commission site, and you can take a look at it there, if you wish to. Go to the next slide, please. There's a postcard that my wife discovered in a local shop down at the bottom of Dot Ave, and there was a 1909 postcard, and we actually have it, and it was actually sent and dated. The boats in the river at the time were tied to the railway bridge. It was an interesting approach, but it's not the way we are currently allowed to do it. I thought it was of interest to show how long, though, the river really has been used by people with boats that are meant to go out into the Boston Harbor area. Excuse me. If you just go to the next slide, please. So, again, also from 1918, and this is the report of the Park Commissioners for the annual report of Milton in 1918, exactly 100 years ago. And it was, again, saying, you know, we rented the, the building for $50. And at the time, it's an interesting entry. There was a request of the U.S. Marshal, an arrangement was made with the yacht club whereby they had entire control of the landing. That was at the end of World War I, of course, and they would have been turning it over because of that reason. And that's, we don't have entire control of it, I can assure you of that, not at this time. If you go to the next slide.
Mr. Day, you have about three minutes?
Currently, in meeting space, we allow free to community groups to, that are listed here, the Greenway Council, Milton Crew, Boy Scouts, the Bicycle Advisory Committee, and so forth. We've also supplied representation on Citizens Actions Committee for the dam removal plans and fishways that took place with the, under the stewardship of the Ponce River Watershed Association. If you just take a look at the next slide, please. A lot of people want to know, well, why don't more people come down here and, and do their boating here? And the answer's pretty obvious, and it had been referenced earlier. It's mostly mud. This is a picture of low tide, and, in fact, yes. In fact, that is my boat, since I made the slide, I figured I could do that. But it's out in the channel, and the channel is very narrow at low tide. The, the area is very difficult to, to utilize. If you go to the next. Our goals, of course, is to garner public support for a longer-term lease for the Milton Yacht Club. We save the town money. We maintain the waterfront access, the dock that's there. The so-called public landing is the property of the Milton Yacht Club, and built and rebuilt over and over by us. And we pay rent to the Parks Department, $14,000 a year. As I said, we maintain the floats. We welcome the public all the time to access the river. We assist people getting in and out with their, their kayaks and canoes, and we assist with the design and support of inland boating access by virtue of all the work that we've done, among others, with the crew team.
You have about a minute left, Mr. Day.
Thank you, sir. We're at normal risk for semi-monthly flooding, but the tidal surges, if you just go to the next slide, you can see that on the 2nd of March, this picture is worth taking a look at. The area down there is constrained as far as its use. This is, yes, an unusual tide, but it's happening more and more. At the flagpole, this was chest-high, and it's really not an area that you can put much, except for storing boats. If you just take a look at the last slide, please. And by the way, I put in a Google Short URL here, if anybody wanted to copy it down, or take, I can provide it to you. This material, including a picture, this picture here, and again, from the 1918 report, there's a quote, "It's no longer a landing place for commercial uses, but is devoted to pleasure and recreation, and is used as the wharf or dock of the Milton Yacht Club." And that's from the 1918 report. There are some notations on the picture here, and that's the area that is in question related to, you know, whether we can continue our operations. And I'm looking for your support and discussion of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone like to speak to this article? Yes, Mr. Howe?
My name is Richard Howe, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 3. I'm a member, with many people, of the Milton Yacht Club, and I rise to support the renewal of the lease for the yacht club. I think the things that I look at, as you saw the flooding down there, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has put forth four options, all of which would be frustrated by that, that flooding. One of the things that's important to recognize is the yacht club has made a tremendous effort to be inclusive of more people participating in the use of the waterfront, particularly the crew. Today, I was talking to Beth Hess, whose son is a very distinguished rower at Princeton now, and he was on the championship team of the crew of the last couple of years at Milton High School. And she said that the yacht club has been really welcoming and tremendously friendly to the crew. They've had a very good relationship. It's really pretty simple. We're getting 15, or 14 or $15,000 in revenue from the club. They spend countless hours maintaining that area without any cost to the town, and most of the options that are being considered with respect to the alternatives will be very expensive for the town. So I suggest that by keeping the yacht club under lease to the, to the, you know, the town, providing the lease to the yacht club, we're going to have more revenue. The yacht, the yacht club is receptive to expanding the use of the waterfront by others in town, whether it be kayaking or small watercraft. I think they're probably supportive of the improvement of the landing there, where you can put a boat in the water. So I think that this is a good thing to support. So I hope that you'll vote for them. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Yes.
Brendan McLaughlin, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I am opposed to this article. I believe the comment from the warrant committee is it isn't even consistent with our bylaws, that these, something like this needs to go through a bidding process. And I think the Master Planning Committee has really, I think, I'd say Milton Crew, and I think the Master Planning Committee have really opened people's eyes to this asset that the town has, this waterfront property, which for, really, you know, for as far back as anybody in this room can remember, until very recently, was a very, very polluted river. You know, Ponce River was, you know, terribly polluted 40, 50 years ago, and tremendous strides have been made to clean up the river. It used to be that people in Milton would build their homes so the back faced the river, because it smelled, and it was so full of pollution, and like chunks of paper waste coming from the paper mills up in Hyde Park. You know, that's all gone now. The river is much cleaner. It's essentially swimable most of the time. And this is really a jewel that we should be looking at and saying, what is the best use for the people of Milton, for this area? And so I think, I think the, you know, the yacht club is, is great, but I think that it's, we shouldn't just try to ram this through as some kind of a renewal, even if that would be, I'm not even, I don't even think it would be allowed according to the bylaws. But I think this definitely should be looked at more broadly, as to what is the best use for the town, for this significant asset. It's the only piece of waterfront we have, and it's a very desirable piece of land these days, and we should really be looking at what's the best access for the public. Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Conlon, this gentleman was waiting, if that would be okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Vaughn, Precinct 5. I just wanted to add a little perspective. When I, I'm an associate member of the yacht club. An associate member means that you apply to join the yacht club. You're an associate member for one year, after which time you become a full member. Why I think that's significant is, prior to joining, I, like many of you in this room, probably, didn't really know a lot about the Milton Yacht Club. I don't know whether you've had friends, family members, or anybody in it. There's not a whole lot of members. When I went down and I decided to join, I went down, I spoke to a few people, I, I applied, I went to the membership meeting, and I became a member. And the perspective I had of what a yacht club is, and what this yacht club is, is very different. Most people think of a yacht club as sort of an exclusive institution that has, you know, expensive fees to join, and membership fees. There's a very nominal fee to join the Milton Yacht Club. There's a very nominal fee for a yearly membership, and it's a working person's club. And what that means is, each member is required every year to put a minimum of 10 hours in to maintain the club, which helps the town, because all of the maintenance that's done down at that area to preserve the waterfront is largely done by the Milton Yacht Club. I've met a lot of nice folks there. I don't own a boat. I probably won't own a boat in the foreseeable future, anyway. But as somebody who didn't know a whole lot about what the Milton Yacht Club is, to somebody who is now hopefully going on to full membership, I think it's a great organization. I think it's well-proven that they've been a good neighbor, right from the warrant committee's, and I'll just read from the warrant committee comment, that the yacht club continues to provide services to the town, to the members of the Milton High School crew team, and maintains the historic continuation of a working waterfront for the residents of Milton. We talk about history and preservation. Usually, that history is in regard to buildings. The yacht club building, for example. Yacht club has been chartered since 1902. Historical preservation also applies to institutions. To note, just to put that in perspective of how long the yacht club's been around, Boston Red Sox were chartered by the American League in 1901. It's a long time to be in a community. Good neighbors, just a great institution. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Conlon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen is unanimously recommending a no vote on this article for three reasons. And I would add that the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which our Chair, Cheryl Togayis, previously spoke for, has also recommended a no vote unanimously. So the three reasons are, this town-owned property cannot simply be leased to the Milton Yacht Club. We must comply with state law, state bidding laws, and put the property out to bid. So for this reason, Town Meeting cannot direct the selectmen to enter into a lease with the yacht club, which is what this article would call for. Second reason is that the Board of Selectmen does not need authorization from Town Meeting to enter into a lease for the property. Prior boards, and that includes the Board of Park Commissioners, who have jurisdiction in this area as well, have put this property out to bid and leased it many times over the years without Town Meeting authorization. And third, this article is an attempt to circumvent the Master Plan Implementation Committee's work and process during the past two years. As Chair Cheryl Togayis discussed in connection with Article 13, the Master Plan Implementation Committee has been engaged in a study of the Milton Landing since the summer of 2016, and I want to give you just a very brief history on what history inspired and how that got started. The lease for the Milton Yacht Club expired in 2014. At the time, the then-Board of Selectmen and the then-Board of Park Commissioners met, and we were advised by Town Council that the property would have to be put out to bid. Now, it had long been a goal to increase public access to the waterfront. The Board of Selectmen and the Park Commissioners agreed that a vision for the landing should be developed to encourage greater public use, before we would issue a request for proposals. At approximately the same time, the owner of the nearby Swift Hatch Shop building offered to donate that building to the town, conditioned upon it being moved down the hill from Adams Street to Wharf Street. The Board of Selectmen formed the Swift Hatch Shop Preservation Committee, some of whose members are in this room. And that committee consulted with Historic New England and students at the Harvard Graduate School of Design. On the same night in 2016 that the Board of Selectmen met with the Swift Hatch Shop Preservation Committee to receive its report, we also met with the Friends of the Milton Crew about their request to locate a second dock at the landing, and they came to the board seeking our assistance. The Friends of the Milton Crew, as many of you may know, is a nonprofit organization that sponsors the Milton High School crew team, as well as an adult masters rowing program. It is seeking a second dock, because the existing dock is designed for boats and is not the right height for the crew shells. The Board of Selectmen in 2016 referred the entire matter to the newly-formed Master Plan Implementation Committee for study and recommendation. And the Master Plan Implementation Committee has undertaken an extensive review. We've engaged all stakeholders, and that includes the yacht club, the 88 Wharf condominium association, Friends of the Milton Crew, the farmer's market, the owner of the Swift Hatch Shop building, and other property owners in the area. And as Cheryl Togayis pointed out, we've obtained assistance from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Just last week, the Master Plan Implementation Committee met with MAPC's representative to review a draft of its final report. The committee is expecting to review, and to issue, to review a final draft, and to issue a report and a recommendation to the Park Commissioners and the selectmen in a few weeks. The yacht club has been an active participant in the Master Plan Implementation Committee's meetings during the past year and a half. They've been represented in most of our meetings. We've been very accommodating about taking input from members of the audience who are attending the meetings, allowing them to participate with the committee in a dialogue. So it's been a very engaging process. And we've also approved funding for a hydrographic study of the waterfront area. So all of those efforts are being undertaken. So all of those efforts are being undertaken, and all of those efforts are directed at developing a vision for the Milton Landing that takes into account the interests of the various stakeholders and focuses on increasing public access at the waterfront, which has long been a goal of many people in town. That work is continuing, recommendations will be made in the very near future, and this article is premature, and for the three reasons that I just stated, we are opposing it. Again, the property cannot simply be put out to bid. We have to go through a bidding process. So the article is drafted, is flawed in that it would direct the selectmen to enter into a lease with the Yacht Club, and it would bypass the bidding process that we have to follow. So thank you very much. We recommend a no vote on this article.
Does anyone else who has not spoken yet wish to speak to this article before Mr. Howe gets another bite? Okay, Mr. Howe, last word here.
When I rose to support this, I didn't really expect that the Town Meeting would approve this lease. I rose to just try to describe the value that this has to the town and it should have in the future. And I hope very much that you all will recognize this, and that when one of the options is selected or recommended by the planning committee, that you will support an effort to maintain this historic institution. And I think that the access, many of the goals of the planning committee can be achieved and still accommodate the existence of the Yacht Club. So I hope that you all will consider this as we go forward. I don't, again, I didn't expect that this would really pass. I just wanted you to consider this. Thank you very much.
Cheryl Taguyas, Precinct Nine, and Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I simply want to mention that a lot of documentation is available on the town's website through the link on the Milton, I mean, on the Master Plan Implementation Committee under studies and reports. All of the work that the committee's been doing is there. There's a lot of good data, all of the comments that we received. We've got matrices of criteria and awaiting different schemes against those criteria, and the final report that will be coming out shortly will also be posted there. So if you're interested in the work of the committee, please take a look at that. I urge a no vote.
So again, folks, we'll proceed to a vote. So remember, if you are in favor of the article as written and want its adoption, you will vote aye. If you are opposed to the article and do not want its adoption, you will vote no. It requires a majority vote. All in favor of the article, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The article is defeated. Just before we go to our last one, if you're all up for it, just a few thank yous for tonight. Thank you to Milton Cable Access for their good work, to Mr. Collier for IT, to the custodial staff for keeping us all hydrated up here, to our resources officer, to our police officer in the back who's here to prevent you from coming at me with pitchforks and stones for keeping you till eleven o'clock, and thank you all to the town employees for the heavy lifting of the warrant, the volunteers you see up above the selectmen, and also our warrant committee down here. So thank you for all the hard work to get us here tonight, folks. Article thirty-nine, another citizen's position. I'll just read the second paragraph in the interest of time and let the sponsor speak to it. "To declare a temporary moratorium and any further changes to the town of Milton's zoning bylaws," the bylaws, "so long as this moratorium is effective. During the moratorium, the planning board shall undertake a comprehensive review of the existing bylaws consistent with the purposes set forth herein, including but not limited to (a) defining the uses and activities that are allowed in these zoning districts either by right, by special permit, or by variance within the town, and (b) addressing the potential impacts of allowing commercial uses in residential zoning districts." We have another citizen, Mr. Joe Henning, who was the sponsor, and Mr. Joe Henning, you have ten minutes.
I don't think I'll need ten minutes, but thank you all for staying. The purpose of our bylaw was to encourage everyone to remember that the unique aspects of our town are all, they all spring from the 1938 bylaws. And our town is different, and you will recognize the differences between it and Waymouth, Quincy, Randolph, very different. And I think the reason is, we mourn, sure, we mourn at times the fact that we're primarily residential because we lack the resources that would be generated by commercial businesses. But at the same time, we have a very calm way of life, we have a very tranquil town, and the 1938 zoning bylaws are the genesis of that. And so now, on their eightieth anniversary, I think it might be appropriate for us to take another look at those laws, those bylaws, especially in light of the fact that we have completed the master plan. To the extent that the master plan would inspire changes, we should make them. To the extent that the master plan lacks specificity, we can give that specificity by making changes to the bylaws to extend the master plan. So what the signers and I all would like to do is stop making changes for now. Stop making Band-Aids and partial changes and overlays and special permits, and let's take a look at the bylaws comprehensively. Let's take a look at the master plan, and let's use the master plan to push some changes. Now, people will say, well, you're stopping development. I don't think this is a long process. I think it's really a short process if you start matching up the master plan to the existing bylaws. Not everything has to change. And maybe what we'll do is validate the existing bylaws, but someone should take a look. And now is the perfect time. Now, as we attempt to implement the master plan, it is a perfect time to look at the zoning bylaws comprehensively. So the signers and I all ask that you support taking a look, taking a look to make sure that the master plan and the zoning bylaws are compatible. And I think it makes a lot of sense at this moment in time. If we continue to do zoning changes and we continue to move forward with projects, site by site, location by location, special permit by special permit, could we be, in the long run, frustrating the master plan? So I ask everyone to think about how the planning board might take a look at zoning comprehensively, take a look at how zoning might further the goals of the master plan, and stop doing a piecemeal adjustment to zoning. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Ms. Taguyas.
Maybe the last time you'll see me, get up tonight. Cheryl Taguyas, Precinct Nine, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously not to support this article. We don't see a need to put a moratorium on any zoning change. Zoning takes time, and to think that we could do the whole town quickly, I think, is just incorrect. There are pieces coming out of the master plan that we've already begun to address, and as I mentioned earlier, we're going to continue to address. Our hope is to bring a couple, three articles to the fall town meeting, and then we'll be looking at the spring town meeting as well. So we urge a no vote.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Kathleen O'Donnell, Precinct Seven. There are a couple, two problems with this idea of this moratorium, unfortunately. One of them is that it doesn't have a time period, and Case Lawn, Massachusetts, is very adamant about the fact that towns adopting moratoriums on building, on construction, on zoning, it requires a short time limit, like six months or a year. This doesn't have any time limit in it at all, and one can imagine how comprehensive a job it would be to get our zoning in line with our master plan. That won't be something that happens in the next couple of months. Secondly, it also binds and prohibits any action by this town meeting in the future. And I'm not even sure that, subject to Town Council's opinion, that that's something that we can actually vote to do. So I stand up to oppose this particular petition.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Ms. Conlon.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen is unanimously opposed to this article, also for the reasons that have been stated. But we would also like to recognize and ask Town Meeting to recognize the efforts of the Warrant Committee and all of their hard work and effort that they've put in. Please join us in thanking the Warrant Committee for their work.
We'll move to a vote. Again, this is one of those votes where if you are in favor of the article as written, you will vote aye. If you are opposed to the article as written, you will vote no. It's zoning, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the article, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Entertained a motion to dissolve Town Meeting? Seconded. All in favor of dissolving Town Meeting? Opposed? We are dissolved.